No, actually it's. Um, I'll let you know when I wake up.
With the indication and.
It is.
Our.
PR. Everybody would stand and stay standing for the pledge, please.
Let us pray. Lord, we come to you today. We are thankful for this cool fall weather that you have given us a little literally here. We're going to, we ask you to bless over the city councils. They have discussions on uh city business and we ask you to bless the citizens of uh Water Grove in here and we pray.
That's over here like. They've moved it. The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And after that, they were all creatures of God. That's a lesson you'll learn, no?
Um, to get it for our musical dinner. The rule call, we are all present in the whole council in minutes today as you spoke. And we're gonna go on. The agenda approval. Before we get with the agenda approval, I wanted to talk to Mrs. Walter and we are adding. Maximum RX credit. They're here today. Do you know anything?
Um. So they're here today?
Yeah, they're right behind it.
Well, good. Then yes, let's go ahead and have that discussion.
Well, yeah, we'll do a, we'll do a brief discussion because this is something that still needs to go in front of the P and Z. Is that correct?
No, but there was uh. A decent discussion today about there's, they made a request at the city for. Winning requirement and that's something the council can do. But no, as far as they're trying to obtain approval for a permit.
Okay.
So if y'all want to add that, that would be very helpful.
Why don't we go ahead and um add them under new business and I know this is kind of a hassle, but we'll go ahead and add them as number one and every other number afterwards. Will be a little bit one later. It's that way we are not having them sit around two hours during the discussion. Okay?
Maximum.
So we will add them to one as number one and then number the future ones accordingly. That's maximum one and some RX credit. Are there any other additions or additions that we need? Your motion to approve the agenda?
Um, well, I'm wishing to approve the agenda with the change of number one being maximum RX credit and every. Discussion item thereafter. Be moved down one spot.
You're second.
I'll say.
Go ahead.
I'll say again.
Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Thanks. That, Joe, I'm gonna turn it over to you and then when we get to the part where a council member has uh submitted something for the agenda, we'll go in through it. It's in the chat view.
Okay, so we're gonna go on to new business or old business uh starting with the mass notification system. See.
Good morning.
Um, so we're gonna be talking about our mass notification system. That way we can further discuss them. So it's same proposals from last time. We have process twenty four unless I'm still red. We have civic plus. Up ahead and text my code. Not much has changed with new proposals, the same pricing. All of them offer very similar services. We can call from each one of them for people who don't receive text or email or email. We can use them outside of. Emergencies, so we can pay our hits on them. Uh, they're all very user friendly. Uh, did have a really good discussion with the director of Code Red. He further elaborated on, he understood the concern of. The delay in getting me a demo. Um, he clarified that. We had a good discussion about that and communication for the future on that. But through the discussion, we talked about some of their offerings, which like I said, we do, were very similar. It is a user friendly site. It doesn't look as much on the demo, but they do have an updated system where it's more user friendly or say one person would be able to manage the whole system. And it's logically based, just like other proposals, uh where you go in and you really can't press it up. So it has templates, it has uh the ability to, if you forget to do something, it doesn't want you to submit it. And it also has ADA compliant, which uh up ahead did not. They're the only ones that didn't have the ADA compliant software inside. Um, and further on that ADA compliant software, which does is make sure there's no crazy graphics uh that people have issues seeing. If you put a text in there, it will have a subtitle. Way that people can view it if they have issues with certain parts. But we're interested in Code Red after that discussion and I'm gonna elaborate more on Code Red just because I didn't get the chance to in our last meeting because we finally had that. They have been in business probably longer than any of the other three companies, so they do have the industry. Uh, further, they do represent some large clients as well and they tailor it down to what our needs are. Uh, they were the only proposal that actually has production year by year, so they are the initial startup and most of them do like five percent up charging, four percent. That's standard for most service contracts. But Code Red actually reduces uh following years because they don't have as much of that input into them. Following on that, we do have neighbors that utilize this system. Uh, Newton County appears very happy with it. Uh, I do think they're struggling a little bit administratively because we do have to administer. So that's why they missed some of it is it doesn't have an automatic. So we do have to administer it. So one of their strong sellings is longevity in this industry. Developed by emergency management professionals, uh probably one of the better prices of these proposed processes. So I just wanted to put that in there. Uh, civic plus, I believe is outside of our price range. They have the most robust system, uh probably the most user friendly. Um, but it is outside of our price range. Even bundling the website and some other systems, it's still averages out to a little bit over five grand. Up ahead, um, I believe this is the newer startup company. Uh, they don't have a lot of references to give and most of them are not in the geographic area. Um, they do offer GIS and everything else that the other ones do, but um as far as consideration goes, they're probably the youngest company, uh don't have a very long time. We have to look up on. Text my gun. Uh, some of their strong points are we already utilize a system for the same software, uh I work. So in future years and in our initial startup, they can bundle that to get rid of pricing. And to that, text my gun is very responsive. Just because we already use them, so we know they're responsive for training. Do you have any questions? About notifications?
Um, that's my guy, the administer staff.
It would be us, the administrative staff, so.
Okay. Who would be responsible for doing the administration?
It would be me, the city clerk. Uh, we wouldn't limit access that way. We don't have too many people trying to do it. Uh, but we will cross train on that, so we'd probably have three people at minimum. Going through there. Um, whenever we do have a finalized candidate for our building and grounds department, that person will also have access. Uh, that way we can integrate them into our local emergency management. Along with, you know, having the counties. From the other purpose.
And what do the citizens have to do in, in order to be included now?
So some of them, and this would be dependent on what the city wants to do, is where you can opt out of doing this. A lot of these companies do have from different public records where. Maybe data tracking, I don't really know how they do it. They do have numbers in the city already um for different variations of whatever they own. So. We could opt in and they can receive a one-time text to opt into it if the company already has their information. Um, I would advise them that personally just because people are trying to, they want their data to be explored, especially by a government entity. Uh, the other way to do it is we advertise. All these companies do come with templates and uh systems to where we can advertise that we have this now. Uh, we can also put it on our website and our notification tab. Uh, and it does have a pop-up on our website. Where once you go to the website, it'll be on the front page. Usually you have to exit out of it before you continue the website. Then they can sign it up. Or by text, a good text.
Are they often sending out those cards?
We can. Or the Q org.
If we, if we do this and there's a cost to the city, are we gonna transfer the cost to the citizens?
No, so this is already budget. So um. Inside of our budget, we do have a technology budget and that would be coming out of that portion. So that would just be a part of our.
So there'd be no fee, do you say?
No, not to the citizens.
This is a service the city is providing.
To your knowledge of this being a service the city is providing, uh. All in line with the other services that we provide for, is a. Ones and hundreds improvements that we hope to do in the city, does this add to our list of services provided, uh things that require?
It would not. So there's a. If, if you look at the services to maintain like a city itself, uh which that is a little if you just well. There's large services like water, sewers, things of that nature, and then there's subservices. Um, because if you think about it, even the city provides so clean enforcement, that's keeping the city safe and beautiful. That wouldn't keep your citizens, uh city status if that was one of your only priorities. So it would be a service because of all of that.
Now, this might be a stupid question, but I'm gonna ask it. If you're not at home. Are you still gonna get the alert?
Yes, so there's three different ways that they do it. Uh, you would get email, a text message, or a phone phone. So most people, when they're not at home, have their cell phone. If they are usually homebound and using home phone, they do voice calls as well.
So it does work on landline?
It doesn't work on land.
They both do?
Yes, but both of the two make tenders do.
Yeah, I think we've come, come down to two.
Does it include our businesses? Can they opt in too?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Do you have some number of citizens or?
That's how they do their pricing. Um, for most of them, they put us at twenty-five hundred as their cap, our lowest uh floor, I believe. So we pay for that lowest price point. Some of them do just an open, um. Not really a cap at all. Um, the two that we have, and that's why the prices are lower is they adjust to your city. So ours would be at twenty-five hundred. And then there is certain ones that. If we're. Going over that, they go by text messaging, I'd say, but I don't see us going over twenty-five hundred residents or fifty messages a year for emergencies.
Okay, that, let me ask Joe, that twenty-five hundred essentially, that's just those that sign up essentially and not everyone's gonna sign up for it.
Well.
But you couldn't have three people in one household, so, but like, you know, okay.
If we exceed the twenty-five hundred, they can contract that.
So I can also see, um. I know this is a service for our citizens. What if, for instance, or gets out to the high school or Water Grove Elementary and all of those employees decide that they would. Is there a way for them to figure out how to be notified as well? Or are they not able to? Get on like. The download app and use it?
Well, it would, we can do that. So uh, as the administrator, you can actually unsubscribe somebody. Uh, for instance, like say someone could do it themselves, they could email us and we could take them off of that registry. Um, if they are having problems signing up, because uh each company does a different, along with how they allow them to register. Uh, some of them do it GIS mechanism, some of them do it, you have to put in your address and show that you are resident in those families. Um, to my knowledge, there's usually no restriction. It's not something I would advertise uh for other places, but for instance, Newton County, if I went to be today, I could. Get on their system and uh register and get text messages from their residences.
So we can put it this way, because this really sounds awful when I'm gonna say it out loud. Um, but citizens of Water Grove pay for this service in their city taxes. And um the employees that are within the city do not pay for this service. But I already can foresee them taking advantage of the service. So the city is gonna be filled for people using it that aren't paid for it significantly.
Would be the same.
I mean, to say, is there a way to prevent that? Because that sounds awful, but is there a way to prevent, you know, the um additional. Three hundred employees in the city to, from using it?
Uh, I believe there would be a way. It may be a manual way, so it could increase administrative burden. Uh, but I can get a more firm answer from these companies of how we do that. Um, because it's something that comes up.
Hey, I can tell you how I signed up for Code Red for Newton County and I don't know if text my gun is the same, but it's probably similar. Um, because I care to take a home that's in New Cat, Newton County for out of state uh people. I was able to call them, but I had to explain to them why I wish to have access to their, I had to actually call Newton County. Because I tried to sign up, you know, with my address and give an explanation. That didn't work. I called Newton County. And explained to them why I wanted access and then they were able to say, yes, you may have access. Uh, but they actually contacted the people that own the home. To ask, was that what they wanted? So that kind of eliminated people signing on very easily.
Uh, I'm more familiar with the process where, so we had a very long discussion and I would assume most of them were saying, you do have to put in your address. They all use GIS to try to. But I know there is options to hold it up to where you don't have to do that. So it, that is, you know, a big worry we can know.
And I don't know, I don't know that the twenty-five hundred, I don't know if that counts based on the ad, I think it counts just based on the address. So like you've got four people signing up to that same address. It only counts as one residence. Versus counting as four.
So is it based on phone numbers or?
Address.
Home addresses?
No, it depends on your population.
Well, right now we have a population of about fifteen hundred people in the city of Water Grove. We have a thousand extra people sign on. We're still within the range of, right? So we don't need to worry about it so much right now. But we will find out if there's a way to use the GIS to keep people who are not within city limits.
Not that.
From signing up unless there's a reason.
Right.
For, but, okay, so, all right. And I just, I want to clarify one thing. The cost of the crisis twenty-four Code Red is fifteen hundred for the first year, fourteen seventeen fifty for the second year, so close down. In the first year of I work offshore is three thousand and goes down to twenty-five hundred. Any more questions, guys?
No. Thank you.
Well, I would.
Thank you, George. Might be another stupid question. But there's no internet and no electricity. Are we still alerted anyway?
Uh, so. So the cell phone should be able to pick up, uh say, you know, a disaster, dust strike with an EMP. And takes out all cell phone reception or anything. Uh, we would be limited in how we have to communicate that, but at the same time, I, I think people would know.
Well, that's when the sheriff's department and the emergency management people would kick in and I would guarantee there'd be sheriff's officers driving the streets, making people aware of the situation or what was happening.
There's no alternative to that is having a physical sire, uh which that initial cost is probably over thirteen grand and then maintenance online is about ten grand a year. So this is just more cost effect, the way they post minimums.
And our charges could sign up along with the businesses.
Any other questions, guys? This will be on the agenda for the council meeting, okay?
So next we have website hosting. This was the second time, um, just gonna very briefly talk about the things we had talked about. So civic plus, as I said, they are a very robust system. Um, they offer most things as a service that we need in the primary package of what we're quoted here. Uh, their total investment for the initial term is five thousand five hundred dollars. And they would definitely satisfy anything we need there. They have their own security and backups outside of our company, uh which like most systems do. Uh, that way if there was a disaster here, we would still have our data stored. With that civic plus, uh Brannicus, I don't see them ever being near our price range. Uh, if I remember, they and I have talked about this, uh they were in the. Initial year twenty-seven thousand and that was for their middle of the road. Um, they are all included, so you would get a variety of extra services. Those are services that we are not at a point where we need. So all the uh new ones that we talked to, and these are mostly smaller companies, regional companies, uh municipal impact, uh they do world water, working world water association. Had a conversation with them, uh the next couple do offer most of those minimal services. They use AI-based model, so a lot of it isn't a person doing, it's a video site that's. Just a ten-footed AI model.
Who is that?
Uh, this is a. World Water Impact or Municipal Impact. So they combined and they kind of use names in their country. Their total was one thousand five hundred ninety-four dollars. Uh, however, they do not do content transfer fee free. Uh, content transfer fee would be nine hundred dollars, the transfer that we have on there to our new website and that would also involve us going through and telling them a little bit more as we're over.
But now we're gonna have to sort of manage that anyway. I mean, we can transfer everything over, but we don't necessarily want everything. Each company, we're gonna have to. Us go through or someone in-house go through and decide what's to be there currently.
Uh, Mutabit, uh this is a company also very similar to municipal impact of how they build websites. Their annual price was one thousand five hundred three eight a year. Uh, and one thing that they had in their website that was attractive. Uh, that differentiated a little bit is they do have a bill pay system included in the website, uh so that would not be an extra cost. We would just uh utilize their bill paying system. Um, the one thing kind of against this one was I did ask about security. Uh, there was. Essentially in the terms and conditions that security will be there. So it wasn't a robust security feature that they could explain how and do it. And that could have just been the salesperson, but at the same time, that does give the cost.
So the civic plus could, they can also do the alone bill pay though, right? It's just an extra fee.
It is making, being one of those. And one, one thing to do through here as well is a lot of these smaller websites, um they do have the ability to call during an issue or emergency. A lot of them do have office hours, but so they're not twenty-four seven. Revised is a larger website and a larger proposal too. Uh, a lot of this in here is just showing you how like everything is and the. They are a really good demonstration. They offer most things that civic plus does. So for their first proposal, uh was eleven thousand eight hundred dollars for the first year and then second year onward would be around twenty-three hundred dollars a year. So they do have a very high upfront cost for content transfer building the website. They're very similar to Brannicus where they don't do a tentative website. They go in and handmade it. Uh, so very customizable to what the needs of city are and all encompassing, which creates that high price point.
Their support was pretty extensive.
It was.
And the fact that they do a take back. Do a take back of the website as it's, it's, it's not vulnerable to cloud somewhere.
And they did have the um. They showed you exactly where their other servers are as well. So that's nice to know that. Where you get back. Thanks for that, Andrew.
My next review has been real.
I didn't ask that question, but I would assume it's.
I know this seems trivial, but I actually was kind of offended by the amount of material because this is what they send us to go through. For an initial proposal to see if we're interested in it. And to me, that's overkill and sort of a red flag for me that they're, I mean, still is how smart they are.
No, they, they have some.
It was eleven thousand for the initial.
For the initial.
Okay, because I got, it says grand total first year and I could be on the wrong page. I've been flipped to this one. Way to hit it. It's forty-nine hundred.
They offer two of those.
Oh.
Yeah, one's more all compensating, the other one is more. In point of what we talked about. So yeah, the other one is forty-nine hundred and twelve hundred a year. It's that's a little bit less data. Um, I would say, I think it's probably this template base and then a lot of the content transfer would be on us.
So the template base, as in that we get a template, we go do it ourselves?
No, no. Uh, they can still help us set it all up and still do it with us as we put forward launch. Uh, but they have templates already created for you to go based off of versus revised, which is more. They must survey what we want and we go through and tell them this, the design, these colors, uh from like a blue board, a lot more than what we need.
The forty-nine hundred one, that it, um. Does it take care of all of our needs?
They don't have a very robust extension service. Um, so if we didn't need, say, bill pay service or things like that, we wouldn't be able to follow them in some revise. They are just website understanding. Um, but they do have a notification system. Most of these do. And like some of them, they don't, they just expect.
Rachel, did you, um, I hear you saying riot and stuff over there, so I'm assuming that you looked into this. Um, what was your opinion of civic plus versus revised?
You're like, this is perfect for if we were a city size of Logan Hill. Or not, or Covington even, um. But like Joe said, they have limited extensions, not just bill pay. We are gonna want some automation on our rentals and things like that. They're not gonna be able to like have a calendar and that sort of thing. Where people can log on and say, hey, I'm gonna check the reservation schedule for this, for, I don't know, so.
It's not gonna be, it's cost versus benefit.
Yeah, cost versus benefit is, is what we're looking at. And then the other side of it is they're very detail oriented. So for. I would say Logan Hills website, we go on the Logan Hills website. They have a ton of information, a ton of graphics, a ton of, you know, a look and they have branding and all this stuff. This is where they shine. We don't necessarily need that because we kind of already have our. Branding and so what we need is somebody to become and understand our website and elevate it to the next level of things that we need to do, which is be able to do bill pay online, be able to do. Ballpark rentals, uh facilities rentals, you know, with the, the building or the pavilion and that sort of thing. Even take it online, I don't know how the corporate stuff integrates into this, but.
And it works without work.
Yes.
Civic plus.
When, we did have it integrated with the pay online for the ticket. In fact, the buttons, there's a lot of their website. It looks like you could go there. I don't know if you still can or not.
You can, you can.
So, you know, you know, we're basically an information site right now.
Right.
And so we're in that transition where we need to transition from not just an information site, but to a workable site that's got additional features. So. Yeah, I think we need to, like Rachel said, rather than looking at somebody that's. Presenting so big, it's more of our need for the specifics, like to pay, pay things online and access. To a calendar that looks like a real calendar. That also is integrated with access to things.
Keep in our physical. In my opinion. Everything is copies. Having a physical copy of our website is a little odd.
I still rate the little.
Quite frankly. Does civic plus do the transfer of information?
They do.
Is the higher priced one, there's two, there's two quotes here, right?
Correct.
Twelve thousand. The one we don't need. But that's the one that has sanitation billing or billing on it abilities. The other one still offers billing ability?
Oh, uh, I'm, I'm sorry. We haven't discussed the sanitation building yet. That, that was a new business. That's why it wasn't lumped together.
Oh, that's okay.
I thought you were talking about revised.
So. The civic plus one that we are all talking about right now. Is the lower priced one?
Yes, and that's just the website.
Okay. Right, go.
And that's the, the fifth one?
Yeah.
Yes. One of the last considerations is Civic Plus because timeline of six, eight weeks. Uh, most of the, the other large companies, Granicus and Revised, take months. Uh, if they are, you can, they both call it white glove procedures, so they, they do take months.
The, the other ones, but literally, i- if you saw the backside of our existing website, the files that are in there, there's so many, S Lynn, she knows, um, they would literally go through each individual file. And at this point, the things that are stored in that file that don't show on the live website, they need to be archived. We have to save them for prosperity, we don't need them to be, uh, part and parcel of our website, so we don't necessarily need that white glove treatment.
Right, right, I mean, that's pretty easy to say, no, we don't need anything on the website from two thousand and ten to two thousand and one. We just need that archive somewhere.
Any other questions, Jess? I tried to have this on the agenda for the council meeting too, okay? I know, Joe Walter, what are you on?
It's wonderful. Good morning, all. I apologize for listening surprised, but I was, uh, wasn't sure until I talked with the mayor last night that there wasn't a meeting. And then I was, Lynn sent me, uh, well, you provided the agenda, Lynn sent me one this morning, so. Um, however, I had it on my calendar, I just wanted to make sure I did what we were gonna be discussing. So, um, I had, let me back up a second. During the normal zoning ministry report, you know, I listed several products that are under review. And maximum RS credit expansion has been reviewed for us some time. And there's been back and forth with the engineer on addressing comments, which is pretty typical for a site plan. So the city received a, the, the most recent supplemental back a couple of weeks ago, and I know they're trying to move forward. And I sent information to the mayor and to Joe that said that they had addressed all the technical comments that we had asked. Uh, but there was still an issue of the land development ordinance, requires sidewalks in certain locations of the city, and one of which is within a half mile of a school. So we had raised that as a comment, um, some time ago, the, the, when the group, the plans came back in. This is also a comment on the elevation truck sales site plan review, which we also got back in recently. I did not hear anything, sent that back out, that's still an issue. So, in the, uh, the applicant who, um, apparently are here and could certainly discuss their, um, that they have requested a waiver of that requirement, and so the engineer submitted a letter, they kind of explained the justification for that. And, um, I sent that forward as well, and I have it, I don't, I don't, I have it pulled up on my laptop and I can read that for you if, if, and I didn't see tip here, but, um, mainly it's not something that the staff can, can waive that requirement, but there's, and the L D O talks about a form to be filled out, I don't think we have all that developed, so what I did was sent forth the copy of the section from land development ordinance, and then sent their letter, to me that suffices in application. So what the, um, applicant is, and the reason why, normally the site plans come to you all to say you have an idea of what's going on, and then you would ask a lot of, of good questions about the building and exterior. Um, and that's all still needs to happen. I haven't gotten the information back from the engineer about where their other approvals stand for the, the water, fire, and, um, solar water and such. But since this one would require specific council action, um, I want to go ahead and get that floating to you. So the, um, engineer, the engineer submitted a letter that said, um, that he's requesting on behalf of his client a waiver for the sidewalk installation on Guthrie Cemetery Road for the above mentioned property. The sidewalk leased to nowhere, but there are no existing sidewalks on this, on the, it'd be the south side of Guthrie Cemetery Road. Um, this is a sidewalk across the street, is incomplete, doesn't connect to anything. Furthermore, this area is designated as in one district with no need for pedestrian access, nor are their current pedestrian facilities installed when this, anyone is in block. So that is, that's what the justification they presented. Now, we'll also say that the, um, cabinet shop, which is across Industrial Drive, their plans did have sidewalk coming, but, uh, of course, that project is stalled. To best of my knowledge, more is proceeding very slow pace, so. So the issue would be before you all to talk about is to, um, sort of thinking about, in this case, what having a sidewalk on the property, um, for the goals of, of pedestrian access in the neighborhood. Because there is sidewalk across the street that leads down to the high school. It's sort of, you know, you can discuss that with the, uh, sort of amongst yourselves, and you can ask questions of the, the developer, you know, where do they, you know, there's also a cost involved and grading involved to, to put a sidewalk in that was safe and accessible. And the other long term you might want to be thinking about is maybe modifying that rule if you feel like the industrial, is, is there a lot, there's a lot of issues with sort of bigger picture, you all know about sidewalks. They're very important to a growing community, but in this case, they, they, they have, um, asked you, they're asking you to consider waiving their, their plans so they can move forward with the project, yes, ma'am?
Why is that exact address?
Thirteen oh eight Industrial Parkway, and I have, um, I have a copy of the site plan, I, once again, I apologize, I wouldn't send that to you all, um, just for your knowledge. It, it would be, if you are on industrial, Guthrie Cemetery and the high school is behind you, the cabinet shop side is here, their side is here, they, they have, they already have an existing building, which is closer towards the high school. This is a vacant lot, and then once you go up Industrial Drive, you've got that business. Um, you've got a couple of businesses up to him and back down towards Park Street.
They are right beside.
Everybody knows the location you're talking about?
And they, they're, I mean, I started my.
Right beside the green, the.
That green.
This gray here is grass.
Is it green was?
Green, green marks or something, they're right beside them, is that right?
Three yards off the side. They're right on the corner.
We're exactly on the corner.
Okay.
Yeah, the side that they wanted to develop is the corner lot.
One of the Guthrie Cemetery.
Guthrie Cemetery and Industrial, yes.
Okay, and they, they already have a building?
Yes, ma'am.
On, on that particular lot?
No, not on that lot, they're next to it going west, I mean, this.
Okay.
If that makes sense, but they want to expand, and they, these plans have, um, we've looked at them a couple of different times over the last couple of years. So, but I believe they're ready to move forward.
Joe, if you can merge. Which, which a lot. That's probably relevant, but we don't see a building.
Well, it's because there's, well, that's what I'm saying, they want to add on to the building.
Yeah, there's two lots there.
Let me show you all.
Is it the Guthrie Cemetery or the one?
Oh, Guthrie Cemetery. We use this real time. There, there, there's their existing building, that's that vacant lot you just pulled up there.
That's their existing building?
Yes.
Okay.
This is the vacant lot, they want to expand onto this lot here on the corner.
So they're expanding, is it building or?
Well, they're gonna add another, they're gonna add another building to serve their business and gardens. And it's office warehouse, it's all assumed appropriately, so this, that's not really, um, there's another issue, it's really a technical one about there's an existing building, the cabinet shop side is here, the high school. That's all correct.
Do we know if we have any foot traffic in that area to speak of? I mean, I realize there's always pop up, I'm there three days a week.
I'm there three days a week for, uh, after school activity. Yeah.
Well, that's kind of.
However, however, not on that side, right? Not on that side, there's a lot. But the advantage walking down Guthrie Cemetery and people for that matter.
The way that I think about it is the reason that you don't see foot traffic is because it's not a sidewalk. Um, because the track team and a lot of kids use those sidewalks on Park Street. I see a gentleman walking up along the sidewalk that goes behind the baseball field every day. Stops at the end of the sidewalk and he turns back around. Um.
Yes.
And with the extension that we foresee in the future of the city, I am highly in favor of sidewalks.
I'm going to start too, it's very tough to be in the high school. Um, and we have always talked in the past four years on council about how we want a walkable city, who want to understand Guthrie Cemetery as some of the other side. I also know that there is going to be more development over on Guthrie. If there was just sidewalk on Guthrie Cemetery side without Guthrie, I could see that in one year. Um, then I don't think anybody's gonna be going down industrial. I think you would have loved them. I don't know.
I think about it as, um, I foresee this beautiful city, the beautiful sidewalks, and our high school students able to do work-based learning within our city, and how wonderful would it be for them to be able to walk from the school to their work-based learning job on industrial way? Um, so, and I believe that's the purpose of that requirement, specifically it says within about a half mile of a school, right, Joe? And so I believe that's the purpose of it.
Especially if they have that.
Right.
How does it, uh, over there in that area, I know right now there's some stormwater issues. And Joe, you, other here, you've seen some of that, um, if sidewalks go in and is built, uh, there still has to be drainage.
I don't want to make it hard for businesses to come, and of course I want it to be, um, you know, affordable, um, but the overall wellbeing and the beautification of the city and what we, if our goals are our goals, I see that we should have nice sidewalks.
But I believe they stated in their letter that Joe read, I haven't seen the letter, but what I heard was, if y'all built a sidewalk, it didn't connect to anything, it's just a piece of sidewalk. So what are the odds of it ever connecting to anything?
The property, they've got their property, they're connected by their property. This property do get sidewalks, this property right now doesn't have sidewalks. We'd have to put that in, but then the property needs to, it's required to put sidewalks in. Eventually, it's gonna get around to where it needs to be. City's gonna have to put in some sidewalks, because some people are already in business doing their thing, and we can't require them to put in sidewalks at this point. But I think the whole discussion, um, in the past has been about creating that walkable city.
I'm correct. I'll send us maybe a legal question, and I'm trying to figure out here, is there a middle grant? Okay. Would there be the possibility of a, an approval of not permanently putting in the sidewalk, but at a point in time where we are, if the city's adding sidewalks and they are required at their expense to, um, put the sidewalk in at that time? I mean, I don't know if that's even an option?
Maybe we can think of that. You could put some for a time, one, on them for them to construct it, they'll give us. But, but it's gonna be an unfortunate issue if it's, you know, seven years.
I can foresee them having a sidewalk and it not connecting being an advantage for the city. Um, as in a reason for the city to get a grant or something to connect the sidewalks, right, DA compliance? Um, but I could be way off base there.
Maybe we can put like a year's timeline on it and, um, state that as the company is putting in the sidewalk, the city will also put in sidewalk to do the kind of thing where it needs to happen and get the other company that's in the process right now being approved for in this. Where it could just be one company doing it and everybody can support it.
I get the advantage of that as well, but I still think we don't have any more security.
I think also for us to try to say that we'll do sidewalks, and we haven't even looked at that as one of our budget and I, for future years, uh, might put us in a bind. If you don't know how we could do anything.
Also, looking at this, I read a picture on Q followers, I would like to see sidewalks going down both sides, by frankly, associated in this area, but looking at that, is that, then coming into the high school. Is this, is there sidewalks there now? No, maybe I'm. Located under the thing that we actually.
Okay. Okay, how much width we talking there of sidewalk, what, what's the width? I mean, if we're gonna have to put sidewalks in front of businesses at a point in time we decide to do it, what's it's gonna cost the city if we're the ones that do it at that time? And I'm thinking in terms of something like where their grading is set now, where it would accommodate that easier, we're not having to go in and do grading and stuff, but they're not also actually having to put in the sidewalk, but it's kind of set up ready for it.
President, you talked about some obstacles, five foot line sidewalk. I mean, in some places in the ordinance, and this is something that we also just look at too. Uh, eternal subdivision streets have been four, but I think really realistically as we, well, I think five is much better for long term, but I don't even, now in the, uh, in the development of downtown overlay district are six, and that probably even needs looking at too, because wider for us is better. But right now you're talking about, um, having a five foot section, certain feet off, but often it need to be on vegetation, but they're not curved. And there, I mean, so there, there, I mean, there's some community with escrow funds from a, some of our clients escrow funds for their street lights and they put them in when they get, there's lots of ways you could approach it if you wanted to have that discussion with the, uh, the developer, um, but you would, if you wanted to, if you wanted to require them to grade it out or to add as a condition of this, that's a possibility to do in later date. Um, and you know, I don't, one of the, the, the letter that was submitted didn't really discuss the costs and their desire to move forward, I mean, that's something you might want to ask directly since representatives are here, um, to do that. Um, I, you know, I, I understand that there's nothing out there now, but at the time, depending on how the cabinet shop residents, they were, they're playing Joe sidewalks. And so before they could get their CO, the sidewalks would need to be installed. Um, which would be, and I think maybe they showed on, I could find on both side, on Guthrie Cemetery and Industrial.
What's the length of the sidewalk area, that road range? I noticed it's near lock, I don't know.
Well, this is another factor that to be discussed too, um, that you might can discuss with the developer, is they're asking for an expansion, so their, the areas to be developed is only, put a liter error right over their dimension. It's not more than just on Guthrie Cemetery Road and put, um, maybe a hundred and fifty feet, I just, I didn't catch that during review, that's a, that page, I might be able to read dimensions, but let's see if there's another one. I, I, so it's not a long section sidewalk.
So seeing that the applicant has something to present, can we give them a minute to present?
It's, I mean, it's up to you all, I'm just preventing the, uh, the, the staff side blocks from the team. It's, I mean, it's up to you all. I'm just preventing the uh the staff side blocks from the team, but you all can certainly. This is a work session. You follow your process and follow their.
Why do we invite you guys?
I'm all for it.
Can you just state your name?
John Fuller, this is my wife, Adina Fuller.
This might be easier than reading on your phone.
I see you probably heard it.
I bought the property from um from Cody in two thousand and seven and moved here from Snell. Most of the information's in there. Um and what we're trying to do is we. I bought the building, the current building that's six thousand square feet. I added a number thirty mile sixty inch high. Still reach supplies. And we're trying to build a new building and bring um. It's a two-story building, so it's four thousand eight thousand square feet total. And so I, we got a. Please, I'll let my house be going. I mean, she's pretty much the similar area to handle on that.
No, we we uh we got a message from Joe that maybe it'd be nice for us to present the title, but. The part, we actually submitted the project a long time ago to the county, I mean, to the city. Um because we had intentions of building out that extra lot. And um it's just COVID happened and a lot of other things happened, so all of our plans got put on hold like many developers. But we're at a point now to really be focused. So we've been pushing the engineer to say, hey, we need our LPD. We have moved forward with some building plans and some partnerships with that SBA. But when did you get a little bit back to history? We actually started this business or my husband did in our house and then um thoroughly known. So it kind of progressed to building. And walnut grove from highway seventy-eight two, we all grew that space. So it seemed like about every ten years we have a real space, which is good thing, you know, but COVID happened and we're still saving. But um he is in a, and he is in a business where he's licensed by the DVA, permitted by the EPA. So it's heavily regulated, heavily secured area. We don't encourage people to come on our property. We want to make sure people stay away from our property. So that was kind of making it a little easy back there, but I understand the sidewalk and we'll we'll kind of address that later on. But um wanted to also let you know that. Our current situation is that we've grown to now service clients with this farm suitable. Reverse distribution, it's hard to say on the word, in over fifty states. So there's a mail-in program that they can mail stuff back to that facility. They have onsite traffic where vans go out and service hospitals, pharmacies and things like that. But they are actually licensed in fifty states. So that's kind of a a veteran in walnut grove's cap. The BBD, they don't authorize that and license them permit that very often. It's not an easy process to go through. And the last also had to go through some questioning and everything else. So that is a good thing for walnut grove to have, not for that um. We currently operate out of a six thousand square foot building that has three bays and it used to be a. It was a pad shop or a window shop? And um it has three separate bays, sectioned off, so you have to enter the base. Through roll-up doors and then there's a um an uh filled out office space in the front. And they're just literally bursting into cities. So um we are servicing hospitals all throughout the metro Atlanta area, just so you guys. That our estimated cost of construction is over two million dollars just for that mural already. Um and that's a building that will match the facade of our building. And not the property next to us, because we all know what the property next to us. On the Walnut Hurriche High School looks like, but the next building, the Lysia Building, we want to mimic that facade. On Guthrie Cemetery, so it's a very consistent facade. It's, so the whole first thought on Guthrie Cemetery will be great. Along industrial parkway, we're going to do a mix of brick and metal. So we have metal structure, two-story. And um upper will be built out with office space, conference space, processing space. The lower level would be a secured um warehouse type of good space. So we are just an initial, we have to not require fire sprinkler or anything like that. We are going to have to install a fire hydrant along industrial parkway, so that's another consideration. With whole sidewalk issue and everything else, that is not a low cost in our. I think just the fact that the SBA went through a whole process of looking at the surrounding areas. They looked at the high school, they looked at the new development in Walnut Grove, the potential. They and the National Banking Institute actually are on board with partnering with a substantial part of our own interest in this project. So um we are excited to continue expanding and developing this lot and not just keeping it on pause. We ultimately chose Saltive Construction to do our design build. They're a design build company. The reason why we haven't submitted architectural drawings. And the drawings you'll see are just really basic renderings. Is because that company actually does the whole thing. They will submit the architectural package. They have hired an architectural firm and are in the process of getting those. Uh plans submitted. I think they said they should have them by the end of the month, which. Would be tomorrow. For the business, but I'm not, I'm not going to hold them to, I'm not going to hold them to that uh because. Um I used to work in that and so. One thing leading into support for the variance. Um on the page that says, like, the first one, the total area for this project that we're behind both lots. Is um just over two point five acres. So it's not a big lot, but it's not a little teeny tiny. It's enough to accommodate two commercial buildings. What we want to do is take some of the slope that's already on that property. And work with that. So that's the reason why we're going to have this sidewalk and we'll use that sloping topography. So we don't have retaining wall or anything that's just really auspicious out there. We want to make sure that it comes in for breaks. In doing that, we're able to preserve a substantial section of natural vegetation and front part of that property. That faces Guthrie Cemetery. So not only will that provide like a screening. For that building and that structure and that area that we really don't want people in and out of. It will preserve the natural stormwater runoff characteristics. So right now this stormwater rolls onto that property, so sheet flows through that property. It's a sloping property, um if you were to drive out there. It slopes toward from track one down to track two. And right now it's just managed with a series of digits. If if we were to try to incorporate sidewalks or anything like that, that means we would have to disturb a substantial portion. Of that undisturbed area that we're already trying to preserve. And as, as you guys know, like, it's, anytime you disturb this area, then we have to readjust stormwater management. So that means this system would not support natural sheet flow. We would have to put in a pipe system. Adding to the concentration, adding to the flow. This is not, what we ended up doing is taking up substantial part because we are adding the affirmative service. Putting this back into a retrofitted detention pond in the back of the existing building. So we are going to manage that stormwater that's on that property now. That actually was constructed back in. I don't even remember when this building was constructed and developed. It's an older pond that was grandfathered in, so has not been upgraded since original construction. We will upgrade this pond to accommodate not only that stormwater, but the stormwater coming off of the existing property. If we were to have to accommodate the stormwater on the front part of the property, which we actually talked about doing in the beginning, so maybe what we'll do is just separate out the. Stormwater ponds, we'd have to put a wall of pond in the front of that property. So there are a lot of factors going on. We have submitted, we kicked around a lot of, a lot of ideas. And we most definitely do not want to have a wall pond on the Guthrie Cemetery side. That would um be interesting. As opposed to the natural institution, institution. Uh we specifically asked for the engineer to try to preserve as much of the natural area as we can. Um our goal is not to disturb the world, but to work with what we have. On the site plan that you see that has the uh new buildings on there. We have a new employee entrance, so the most common. Entrance, the employee entrance and then out will now be moved to an industrial parkway. Um the Guthrie Cemetery driveway will only be for vans and commercial traffic, which, you know, that happens. Early, early in the morning and then early afternoon, because that's when the. The crew leaves out and early in the morning and it'll be like uh comes up, comes back early in the afternoon. The new track, and I hope the new track is going to have a separate septic system. So we are working Walton Grove, uh Walton County, sorry, to put in our septic system. It's my understanding that we do have um the approval from Walnut, sorry, Walton County. Hard to. Uh Walton County uh so. So I think those permits are in place. I'm not willing to purchase one. And we do not have fire marshal or any of the other, because we don't have our protection plans turned up. You can see on the building plan, the, this, and again, this is a whole plan, so it doesn't really show that. It's the industrial park side is the mix of brick, brick and metal. We're actually going to not have a double facade with this, with the offices. Brick, it will be metal with a brick water too. Um that'll be nicely constructed and again, in keeping with a majority of buildings that are in.
So you're saying this plan isn't a data plan?
It's not the data plan. It's just, it's just a, in, in duck and will look like this. But the side that faces industrial parkway, the only difference where that brick area is shown. Past the four walls, that will actually be metal, a metal facade with a brick water too. So it'll still have the brick consistency or. And then you can see the floor plan on the next page. We'll have a, an open office area, um nice conference space, processing spaces. Reception. We want to make sure it's got high-end uh wifi. And some updated technology. So we're putting a lot of money into this building, which we're like. It's going to serenities for a long time, we're not looking to move. We want to say, there's a lot of buildings out there that are vacant and um nothing just appeals to us to have to retrofit something else when we have. Community, we're already there and uh again, we, we just want to say.
What's, what's the potential here for additional jobs for this area with that building? It is there a potential there?
Immediately, um I, I saw a lot of them work out bigger companies um that goes to North Carolina. They've got these like trilogy and stuff that can accommodate. And so uh that law will come in to me um and. Right now we don't have any accelerators in the state of Georgia, so I have to go to hospital. A park line to witness construction on a circle. So once we able to build a cage, build a safe, to get approval from DEA. It's the only one we're doing, we're going to. Witness construction and take it. Personally to things that are in control.
I think these are the way proposing to add at least two new employees. That's two new employees. That's excluding any other contract employees or.
I have eighteen current and definitely that these two three files.
And then exclude her.
So I understand you don't have a accelerator on here? Do you have the updated plans or renderings of what the building's going to look like on the outside?
I can get that to you. I think. Show what we have given Saltive for them to start their architectural.
Something I want the council to keep in mind. Doctor beat by the city and uh and make that happen. But we also need to consider the fact that right there on. Run a curve. Anybody across there, it's not safe. So I understand about wanting people to be able to walk to any kind of jobs they might. Might have on industrial, but I think it would be better uh and safer for our students to direct them along. Be sure the other way, but it's not going to be safe. I mean, just pulling out of the industrial right now. Is a hazard and you, you're taking your life in here and it's with everybody just flying around there. Right now, there's actually a sign up by the sheriff department slowing everybody down because everybody flies around there. So take that into consideration, please, as you want to make decisions. Is everybody comfortable with putting um the Jerry's request for the sidewalks? On the council meeting coming up, that's not. That's not approving everything else that they have to get still. If you think, yay or nay, is everybody comfortable with having that request, that variance on the.
It doesn't have, you got a plan in the zone in first?
No.
The uh the LDO is real specific, that's. About, is this a technical requirement, not an overall blessing of the project? I mean, they're, they're.
In order to finish doing plans, they need to know.
Looking at what the business is on all ends, if we have a sidewalk on the side of the school.
And it's fine.
That's not an area you really want to encourage foot traffic on the industrial side. So in my book, that side of the road might be better off not to have the sidewalk. But you can have a situation where if there were a business along there that paid her to the school. Would require them to then put in an area, a crosswalk at their area or their location. It would be a further push help with students now, I mean, otherwise they walk to the crosswalk. That's kind of my feeling, and I would have no objection to providing.
All right, any other questions, everybody? We'll all work together.
That will be September the eleventh.
I do remember when they came to town. I was doing the website when they came down and I worked with you to get your name. I mean, we just had a listing of our businesses was all, and maybe they found them on website. And I remember talking with them, asking what they need.
These deals for us in the bees and uh recently I have planning inside here on it. But I want to have a talk with Mr. Walter first, that's around the tree. A lot of those, the big reason we didn't go ahead and do a survey by them. Because we do contracts, so many of those services out, such as forsaken planning, your veritas. We have to incorporate that cost into that. Uh otherwise we could be out of those, we paying for inspections, thank you very much. So what we got today is residential sanitation. Uh this was created based off of what we are current, currently our cost. And something that I'll have to come up in city council meeting is how many people are bidding for this. This is where we can have a standardized idea of where we're going to go with. So residential single family, twenty dollars a month, that will come with a ninety-five gallon bin, eighteen gallon recycling bin. And three yard waste bags. Uh additional services that will be offered, residential five gallon bin, uh eight dollars a month for that additional. A six five gallon recycling bin, three dollars a month. And additional yard waste bags beyond three will be three dollars a bag. And that's currently what our uh cost is for the city to provide a sanitation service.
This is under sanitation, right?
That's critical.
Are we going to get other bids?
We're going to have, we're going to have to get that to the process. Would that come to us in a week or two? I will have that prepared uh the amount next week. And then that way we can start that bidding process after the council screws what we do. Which is a very standardized process. These things are sort of very little. We wait what we can do personally, uh, but we can't put on there what we expect. And that's how it is.
We're kind of in a position because we need to notify residents what we're going to be doing. So we need to have a price that we can give them saying this is going to happen. And then if in our negotiations we end up as a city having to incur a little above and beyond what we're doing uh, or what we signed up for. Where maybe administratively we lose a little more than we expected. So I think that's the right move to make is to to put our price on it according to that at this time.
Absolutely. And that's, that's a big reason why I wanted to bring residential sanitation to the beginning. Um, this is what we're going to expect um, from our proposers. If it is a little bit higher than that same scenario. Uh, that way our citizens can understand what they're going to do.
Because I, I think, I personally wanted notice to go out basically in July to the citizens so that they had a six month break range. Um, that was my preference. And we haven't got married yet and we're now going into September and I don't know how soon you can get something out to residents. It's been down for that. So is this the info we're sending out? For the residents or waiting for the bids?
We'll be creating a bid packet, we'll be getting out to garbage companies. The garbage companies will have a deadline to get their bids in. You'll be in council on Thursday evening.
So we're making a decision on where we go.
A decision. We're making a decision right now on the pricing that we will charge in.
Right.
Or version of for these different.
That's, that's what I went with. We're, we're not deciding. We're deciding what price they'd be charging the residents.
Yes.
And if we end up paying more than what we're charging them, then mine. But I.
I don't, I don't anticipate that being on the conversation.
My question is, how soon do we think we're going to get what we put a price on it? How soon are we going to get that out to the residents? I mean, are we ready to go with that soon to go price soon? They want, is it going to take a month before we're in original first building you call it?
And that could happen, uh, just immediately tomorrow if it was priced. But until it's set in stone, we can't tell that this is the process. Uh, because the future will happen.
What we can do is I've been thinking about doing newsletter and what can somebody put in there? Is that we are anticipating a price of approximately twenty dollars. In that way, we are not guaranteed, but I don't anticipate it being any higher than twenty dollars.
What I'm saying is, can't we guarantee that? Could it like, I mean, we can't vote to that at our next September meeting. We can vote without the bids in place. Because we haven't idea when it's going to cost us. Or if we know, we can know this roof. Uh, we know what summer sanitation is all.
I understand what you're saying. I'm comfortable.
Okay. That we take about as quickly as possible where it is cut and done with what we're charging residents. Because I will tell you from my standpoint, you whatever bid we decide, I'm not comfortable with it anymore than twenty dollars a month on the road. And I personally would not vote for anything higher than that, even if the city is adding to pick up the difference. Well, I didn't want to put any on the citizens. Now, I agree with that. If we can do it for twenty dollars, then we need to do it for twenty dollars. Because I didn't want to charge them nothing. And that's a core part of why we help by reducing the tax through trying. Because some people it's going to be a hardship. Yeah. They're going to have to do some work on their budget to see where that twenty dollars is going to come from. Right. And when, when the first building come out, I mean, if we're supposed to start this in January. Um, you know, when is the first building coming out? In the citizens. Are they paying in real or they paying in advance? So essentially know that.
But you know, before November, because they got to pay November. So is everybody comfortable with the twenty dollars?
Since this is a regular meeting, can we take action? I, I know that's happened in the past and there were some.
All right. So that'll go on the.
This is a very difficult section to do a survey. So for some of the places it's so difficult to offer as a called an amenity. Or I think it's used to fix things. So let's go through here, a lot of our fees are not changing as opposed all those concession building currently there is okay because it hasn't been used. So, um, we're going to look.
The plumbing always did work if they were closed down during the winter because of like. Sorry, but we have found a solution to that by putting in.
So what I'm proposing here is a new fee of ten dollars for residents, fifteen dollars for non-residents to utilize that concession building.
Is there concession equipment in there like heat fryers and bridges and refrigerators? It would, it was just the building. Basically, yeah. You would be able to sell like your product. Thank you. All right. I'll just bring a shirt off. There does need to be a deposit.
Okay.
I do feel like that fee is very, very low.
I think they're.
Well, that's in their form to use.
So it's a little bit more.
They're just written in the shell.
The bill. More than likely they'll be using it as a, as a way to do fundraising.
I will say that I had some, um, people reach out to me and they actually wanted to see about hosting a ball tournament at the ball field. And they wanted to use the concession stand in order to sell concessions to raise money for their ball team. I feel like the fee is crazy low, so low that everybody will take advantage of it. Um, so I mean, I guess we can always come back to it if we needed to.
So okay. Lots you can buy up and it's sad. Uh, one, it is not a standard concession stand. Uh, you go to Lance Club in the line or we go to, you know, the red. It's very robust. It's big and they have equipment. We have done it. It, it really is just a shell and mostly we keep it for the bathrooms. Um, beyond that, what I asked people and no one has used it for a legitimate game. It's mostly practice.
Probably thirty years.
Right. And so I, I didn't see a need for it to be extremely high and then determine where people could never use it.
I have a question. So we didn't use the ball field for thirty years either. We put lights up and it's been great. Um, what if we consider putting some shopping in there? And, you know, if it's being run out and it's being used, let's see how that goes. Um, and then I would like to look at, um, putting some shopping or something in there. Um, making sure the electricity and everything works. Because it could be just as successful as the ball field.
Hmm. The electricity works. The only problem is guys is that this isn't like a West Walton Park where you've got five games going on at once. You've got one game going on and, uh, the ability to do a lot of fundraising is, it's not going to, it's not going to be profitable unless you've got this tournament going on. You're all there all day. And the possibility of tournaments happening there all the time are probably pretty slim. But we can look and see what's being used and we can look in the future. Let's go ahead and focus on today. Let's focus on what the fee schedule could be for today so we can keep the meeting moving and we can get this going. Okay? I hope we can always, we can always visit that.
I wonder if even the light windows are still operable. They used to, I think it's fit to the spot, to the side, to open, to serve the food from. I wonder if they.
We can look at that.
I'll talk to Grant, maybe I can just have a look at. My question is, do we have administrative costs when we rent it out for someone having to go along? Somebody have to clean it? Somebody have to clean it. That's what I think. And is that one to cover the, that cost? That, that would be my only question to make sure we're not going in the hole.
It'd be the same as when we used.
That probably works. We just go by and clean it up when.
No, the pavilion, like with the pavilion, there were, the people who rented are required to clean up after themselves. They know that it was their deposit. Same will happen with the, uh, ball field concession building.
Okay.
Or this building, when we started this building.
So there's no deposit for the concession building right now?
No, but we're adding it.
Okay. Do we know what that's going to be right now?
I think. Is everybody okay with two hundred?
Does the fire marshal have to look at it before we rent it? We're not doing any kind of exhaust or anything like that. I'm just asking.
Yeah. Yes.
Um, so for the ball field, it also doesn't have a change. Uh, twenty five dollars for residents, thirty five dollars for non-residents. Uh, it get you, it does get utilized fairly well, but that's not a burden to overly place on, um, people.
Okay. So flights are on, does that even cover the light cost?
Does it come, so he don't learn any help?
And I'll tell you also, if you raise that fee a whole lot, we will, we'll lose people. But as their practice then two and three times a week, that gets expensive.
They're usually payable.
And but.
The electric bill is not on significantly. Yeah.
Uh, for the pavilion, it also stays the same. Uh, current fee a hundred dollars, a hundred and fifty for, uh, non-residents and a deposit of two hundred dollars.
Well, everyone thinks we're getting a fair amount of rent. Yeah, I think it should increase too. And that does not include use of the outdoor kitchen? Yes, it does. They're just going to be cutting out of there. Yeah. Which will, will not be available if they can do it. But if they bring the grill, they can grill it out and use the window.
How often is that running out pounds there?
The pavilion. About four or five pounds a month. Sometimes. Two or three. I don't know. But a hundred and twenty five. Anybody, anybody okay with that? One twenty nine?
Twenty five. Yeah. At one seventy five. Remember not.
Yeah.
Is there a reason, Joe, that you didn't do that or?
Um, so, and like I said, it's hard to survey for these kind of things because everyone's so different what they offer.
Yeah.
Uh, just other places I know. I mean, you can give in your bar, just like above that and they usually come with a full building. Uh, for instance, I can go down to the between for fifty dollars, thank you building.
Thirty point five.
A hundred and twenty five. Or I can go to Good Hope and use theirs for two hundred dollars. Um, basically I want to put us in a position where we price ourselves out.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
I don't know. Between building, I have the one in Good Hope is had the full kitchen. Um, it's all covered. It has a playground. It's, um, right beside it. Um, the one in the.
It has full kitchen.
No, I guess. In between?
Not, not in between. I'm thinking, uh, Jersey.
The one in Jersey has a.
Good, that's a fridge, microwave.
Fridge or microwave.
Yeah.
And but it's an interior building, correct?
Yeah.
I mean, if I was going to say, um, I want to go have my birthday party, my guest birthday party at the between place that has indoor facilities versus here where the pavilion is outdoor, I choose between every day. So I think we should stay lower than that.
Lower than one twenty five?
I think between would beat us out and we weren't lower than them. If there's.
You're going to accomplish a lot for people here at the pavilion and you can't between. In between, you can only accommodate about, I think that there maximum is probably about fifty people. Over here, you can have hundred.
But if it rains.
Well, that's why we're going to cut this bill. Which we're going to add to this.
Yeah, but that's not going to be included in the one hundred dollar pavilion rental.
Yeah, but we have a lot of people who come and want that pavilion for churches and different civic groups and families.
Would it benefit in any way to separate the kitchen being available versus just the pavilion? For instance, if they want the kitchen with it worth the one twenty five without the kitchen, one hundred and is, or does that just put a hardship on the city that way?
Okay. Yeah.
Well, one without the kitchen, I don't know. I think that's our service.
They don't ever really use the, the oven in there and that has to come out according to the fire marshal. Just like this one, you know, it's not commercial. You know, it's not vented either.
I mean, I guess depending on the event, personally, I wouldn't choose this facility for the same price over the between people. I'm not going to have a hundred people at an event unless it's a wedding. And I'm not going to do that at either facility. So, um, that's my opinion.
Why don't we see the difference? It hasn't gone up in years and years and years. So why don't we see if there needs a difference if we're losing out on property? But then go to lower down again. Is that a move? I mean.
Is scale for eight customers?
Well, churches are no longer getting it for free.
Okay. Or any other nonprofits that don't get it for free.
A lot of churches. Use their own facility.
Because nonprofits don't make money when they do their event. But money because charities are on the charge.
Uh, because we. Has rented out. Of renting it out.
But that's our donation to charity.
But we're not donating, we can't donate to charities. We're not allowed to. And we're a business and we've got to run this business too. We can't, we can't lose money on different things. This is a service, it's a facility, it's a rental fee. And that's what, you know, a lot of nonprofits work into their budgets is those, those kind of fees. Okay.
The next one is, uh, this came up twice in the last two months. Uh, we had two different, um, one of them was a cheerleading squad and you probably saw them on Thursday. Um, but two groups wanted to know if they could reserve open space or if they could utilize open space in the park. Um, and what I put in here is essentially open space is free. You can go use the park for what it's designed for. Um, but, but we did. Being here that way, someone sort of, like for us, someone wants to do a yoga in the park class. Uh, that way they do have a right to that one area if they reserve that space. Um, but what we put in here is very minimal price, fifteen dollars for a resident, twenty five dollars for a non-resident. Um, usually it's not an all day thing. And, uh, for instance, the church might use it for a, uh, some type of water events, which don't worry, we did tell them. The difference in the year. Uh, but that way if they want to have the right to say this is a closed event and it's smaller.
Okay. So let me ask you, because I've seen this happen. I put my hair in. There's all kinds of houses. Out here and think this is running loud anywhere. But I'm just give that as an example. Okay. I'm not saying, but I'm saying would that include like if somebody went to reserve the space behind? Or they private from everybody else?
They could, uh, but it does need to be an open space. So if they're too close to like the, uh, jungle gyms or anything like that, we couldn't allow them.
Okay.
Trying to try people for open space in the park.
Same.
First come, first served. If you want to use it, use it.
Yeah. Now you've got somebody trying to do a flea market out there or something and.
So where a small conflict can come into play is for instance, please the, uh, the rectoring, for example. They have twenty five kids that come out, they're doing their practice. If some random person, whether it's living, use that space, argument can ensue that they have a right to it just as much. Um, and not respect the fact that this group is practicing here. That's the only reason.
So that's also going to be after business hours. So who's going to enforce that?
Yeah. I think at that point, that, that becomes civil, let them, let them call the sheriff department and, and get rid of whoever's trying to, you know, infringe on their area. I think that's, I think we. That's what we do on the pavilion now for when people rent that, but just green space.
That's a good example.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I don't see charging for that, but I do see the possibility of if there's something very specific that we turn that over to that's administrative. If, if this is a legal way to go back to say, we can. if this is a legal way to go back to say, we can see where they don't need interference and City Hall can say, we've reserved this space. I mean.
It's a.
But we're, we're not charging it, that it would be an exception to the rule type of thing that we would. If somebody came and asked about reserving space, why do you need it, you know, and y'all decide it's in your hall.
Yeah.
Is that a reasonable to, that they've reserved the space, and there's just no charge for it?
Yeah, I agree. Because there are things that I go ahead and weave to be on if we made a mistake, or, or if there's a certain situation and we need to take care of it. I will weave with the, one or two things, and Joe has the ability to do the same, so I agree with you, just leave it in the administrative, the, answer the administrative team, and, uh, if there's something that pops up and we need to go ahead and, and make that an exception, then we can do that.
Right, and if you're more comfortable, you know, polling council with, we're thinking. I guess that's certainly an option as well.
And I think that's, I think that's something Joe can decide on, uncomfortable for Joe, so.
Right.
Yeah, but charging for space in green space? And I, I think that's going a little bit too far.
But, yeah, I was picturing like, okay, well, somebody wants to do a car show here, because we used to have car shows out here, but they were more city sponsored, they were not individual, but I'm thinking, okay, would that qualify under that?
Yeah.
Suddenly you're getting lots of stuff going down that's maybe not the right thing.
Last one is to be just, so, uh, we do some stuff, we can actually remove this space out, which is removing, uh, the, uh, for the, uh, so. Um, here, we can kind of set up tries that made sense based off between and Good Hope, what they're charging. Uh, anywhere else is usually a little bigger, so it's kind of part of the price point of that. So we put it at, um, a hundred and fifty for residents, two hundred for non-residents. I'm gonna put a five left, seven hundred and fifty, because there's a lot more in here that costs money.
This is, um, for a regular rental?
Great.
Okay.
I think we need to limit to a certain number of showers.
Oh, it does.
I'm thinking. When you guys.
Does that come with tables and chairs?
Yes, we're looking at getting, uh, tables we have now, particularly for that, um, we'll need those. It's a good thing, but we're talking about getting, we have some here as well, but any other? You can use chairs, they're in very good shape, and we have some metal ones to add in if we need to, but, um, yeah, we're supposed to have a sign up. Did anyone work to ever get that? The maximum, the mass that you signed for this building? They did not. We'll get that, and we'll get it, and we'll base it on, that's the minimum you can have here. Um, and we'll figure out how many tables. We're gonna do for that chair.
Will these doors be locked, so they're only able, are they only like in this area in the kitchen and bathroom? So.
Another question, and keep in mind, nothing, no records of any time are kept in that room or this room. The rooms are used, records come in there and forth, and then they go back out.
The items up here, will they?
Put away after a meeting.
Okay.
Will this area be cordoned out so they can't fly around at this time? No. Yeah, that, that was an issue we had before. Because I can see. Chairs broken single. I can see a child. They might be in the play. And the kids get up here and walk and, uh.
Well, that's why you have waiver forms with those rentals, if they serve themselves because of, you know, that thing. That's what we'll work with Jay with.
Yeah, it sure was more than damage, then, yeah.
No, that's why I think.
That is, yeah, I really, I mean, with my meeting, because cleanup crew missed the diapers that were up under here.
But we have, we put things up here to.
But I'm just saying, you know, those are the kind of things you run into when you rent this sort of space.
I think we should put on there a deposit of two hundred, and also a statement that says any being all expense, expenses in.
Should be around.
Um, will be covered by the.
And I, I personally think it should be per hour rental fees with the minimum.
What do you think?
Um, thinking in time for the minimum of two hours. And that, that minimum would be like. The table now.
I can see, that made me have an idea, so thanks for saying that. I could see, we have a need in Warner Grove for, um, a conference room. And so I could see businesses renting this out just for an hour, an hour and a half, if it's affordable. And we could really rent this place out a lot that way. Um, so that's something to think about too, and, you know, um, they may choose not to use the kitchen, all they want is literally a place for thirty people to meet for an hour. Um, or maybe they don't have a closed office, it might just be two people when you're meeting for an hour.
Yeah, keep in mind though, you're going to have something to do here, because if somebody done locked it down, then you'll have to possibly have some new cleaning. You know, so if you rent it for an hour, seventy-five bucks, and then we have someone coming to do the cleaning.
Well, that plus it with the two hour minimum. You also have to have somebody to set it up and break it down.
Well, if they're only renting it for five people to have a meeting, how much cleaning are you gonna have to do?
You never know. Just, you know, I would think for the most part, if I went in and had a meeting, it'd be the drywall, so I would leave it better than a carpet. But there's not everybody like that.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, that's just a thought for an alternative for building at this space. Those, to say a hundred and fifty, whether you're an hour or eight hours. Eight hours at a hundred and fifty, and depending on what you're doing, you know, family reunion where you've got sixty people in here, there can be a lot happening in that amount of time, and that's a small amount of money for that.
Why don't we look at putting it at, uh, one fifty for four hours? And then if you go a little back, it's an additional.
Twenty-five, I don't have.
Say again, that's what's on.
Four hours, uh, for a hundred and fifty dollars. Extra hours, and then add plus twenty-five dollars an hour for that. You think?
That kind of makes more sense to me.
And I think the. We don't deposit, we, we just take a check.
Also, can we, um, set standards? I mean, I know this is really an admin thing, um, but it worries me that you've stating that the chairs and things got broke previously. Um, that company on the chairs, everything up here be locked in that rain, and that what's gonna happen, okay?
Yeah, I just chubbed Lynn, and then we've got in there, here, and in that building, that room, um, nothing has been cleaned out, we need a team here. Except for those election machines, they're not here. Um, but we're gonna be going through these closets, getting them all cleaned out, we'll consolidate it with the tables and chairs if you want. We're not setting up for people, we need them, they are.
Right. Right, yeah, let them be their own setup and.
And then put away.
So maybe they'll have access to that one room.
Like one room that has.
Say, use your phone to make things, put it back, lock it down.
So, yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Good guys?
Mm-hmm.
And we'll try and get that changed and updated, and you guys start getting it next week, so you can see it before. If we have a meeting. And that's.
On the city plus. Some new source they offered, and anyway, it's not more sanitation, so they're actually focusing to fill a puddle out. Uh, so we're bringing them down as we can, so we don't need or eat anything like that. Um, and going through here, it does a lot of things for us, um, you would be able to do every form for sanitation, adding, um, all of the different additions that we would propose, added instructions of Merckel, uh, all the residents. They also have a fellowship, uh, addition where an owner can look and make sure their operations being, or sanitation was being paid by the renter. Um, so there's a lot of functions in there, specifically reporting, they can create a form, a financial report form, that can be returned when, whatever financial software we use, but it can be adjusted as well. For instance, uh, we'll use now, uh, is three sections, almost like Excel, they can create that form for the reporting that way, so it's easier to transfer. For financials.
I think so.
Identifying.
Look, it does have a pretty hefty cost. Um, and this is a combination cost, so a package between the website and this, put together. Um, the total investment for the first year will be fifteen thousand, and annual recurring will be twelve thousand, one hundred sixty-four. So first year, that's an admission of around ten thousand dollars just for the space.
So we're creating all handling sanitation for the citizens, um, for billing, pretty much. So we're taking a the lowest price to get sanitation for sixty thousand dollars and changing that pretty much to, what was the price again?
So this one was fifteen thousand, if you can borrow a website.
We have like about seven hundred group jobs to get sanitation going.
Look.
Because if we're, I'm looking, man, very quickly, just the, the wrong math, we're paying out sixteen dollars a month for each house, so that means our administrative window right there is about four dollars. So that comes out.
You cover the cost, yeah.
Yeah. About twenty-eight hundred a month, so that happens, which is at least in the right window.
Anybody? So you'll be combining on the agenda this for the sanitation in website.
Yes.
Then you said this calls was for the website and the sanitation?
Yes.
Or just sanitation?
Uh, just as combined.
Combined, okay.
Yeah. And this is for the billing for sanitation.
So essentially, they would be providing a website and well and sanitation billing from the incorporated, and if you need any other kind of billing.
Yes. I don't believe there's no cost associated with that. Um, a big reason for the initial cost type on this one isn't just involving software, it's they're creating a full software for us. Apparently, they don't offer sanitation.
And you expressed to them that since we're their guinea pig, we should get a goodness camera.
Um, they did, they give them proceeds. Um, but, and then whenever we add other services, if we say in twenty years, we start selling our own water somehow, they just add that piece of software inside of it. I don't believe there's a potential cost, if there is, it's known. I currently don't think against sanitation. And they do have sewage meter reading abilities as well.
Joe, before we go on, I'm gonna go ahead and take a five-minute break for anybody who needs to get up and walk around in the restroom. Anybody who wants to leave?
Too bad. Thank you, Stan.
Does anybody need it?
Does anybody need it?
I'm gonna take it, Benny, jump the page. Get some dirty air. I'm not wearing my spud, maybe you can help me with that. My thank you check. Thank you. Oh.
Here, crack, crack, crack. Um, you didn't hear it.
We're always taking care of it for lunch, first thing to that, seven o'clock. I kept saying, that's my tar line. Yeah, it's true.
Most of the reasons that's now.
Next agenda, that's right.
We have.
Oриations.
I know, I know.
I have a mean.
Well, I'm just, I'm sitting here looking at here, you don't need to, what do you need?
Well, I'm gonna stay as long as I can, but I was just giving you a heads up, it starts getting a good. It's all, it's all, yeah, you're.
And I know it's not short, but I'm.
Mayor, do you think it's a stolen water fund?
Yeah.
That's okay, five feet.
Joe, at a retreat on the
Okay.
seventeenth, which I'm gonna go ahead and send and finalize to you.
Seventeen?
Yeah, that's one of those dates that we looked at.
Okay, let me go ahead and plug that in.
I've got you and Mark Beatty coming on the seventeenth, would you prefer morning or afternoon?
Afternoon if possible, because, uh, I believe I have a morning commitment in Lawrenceville, but I'll go ahead and put, uh, on a growth retreat. Um, so I'll book anything.
Probably write it up to your lunch, if you'd like to do it in a lunch drive.
Sure, look that.
I'll confirm that with you.
I just want to give, you know how it is, if you don't get it on the calendar.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Um.
Yeah.
All right, well, thank you, I'm all, uh, I'm gonna go ahead and head to the office soon.
Okay. I'm gonna talk with you two ahead of time, because I don't, I wanna have a discussion, but I don't.
Sure.
We need to have definite things we're looking at, be scheduled on.
No, 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 you, yeah, you give me parameters so that I could have that discussion, so we're not.
We need to come away from there.
Yeah, because we would have to amend the land development ordinance, I think, too. Because to update from the current C U law. All right. And I'm, well, I will be out of town when it is eleven September, but I will get to you zoning the fourth and.
Makes sense.
Me too.
I can be all again, um, other factors.
Yeah.
Can say it, can say anything, sir.
All right, now, keep it real. Very organized.
I can't. Okay, for one, yeah, well, I appreciate it, you know, some of the ones. We won't be as clean as. Not again. Well. Oh. That's, that's, that's the one cleaning the downside at ten o'clock, it's I don't really think you can put it up. Oh, yeah. If you remember House Bill three nine nine, the, uh, ten and, playing over relationship bill. Yeah. Okay, it's gonna play a piece in one of these. Uh, right, so it was actually kind of a little bit, because originally that's what Paul rented. But the last one, that bill still will be without measuring for over benders. Just a little bit. I don't know if it's coming up by that. That's all.
You streamline the process. Yeah, Mr. Jam, how many are you doing?
Not bad. Not bad, haven't you, sir?
You having any fun with the?
You know, I looked at, uh, that's, uh, that's somebody else.
That would've been fun.
Yeah. Yeah, and it's not continuing to be fun.
And both of them. Isn't it? Yeah. I couldn't believe it. And I guess they're appointing right, you never know, second or second, they're appointing huge. Yeah. I disagree with the tactic, I think I'm gonna revisit it, so I'm. That decision was made in May, that's when the. And I think it's a teaching tool for us, if you really do care, pay attention and get your people before it happens.
Yes, exactly.
So there's so much misinformation out, how much practice gonna have, I mean, I wouldn't, if all of us, we should want to make, I have a list, thank goodness, I would.
Yeah, that's the frustrating thing. Oh, I couldn't understand that. That's a good side of the game.
There are a lot of this.
Put that away. That is twenty nineteen point five. Somebody did the wrong.
Lock it next.
If you want. I think it's a tactic seventeen one nine one.
Always, yeah, but that's for that.
And we used to get in, they said. And you're like, right, it comes down to a lot lower number than.
Yeah, yeah, because I mean, for that, it's only on forty percent of how you have. It's kind of where me and my wife.
Twenty years. My son's.
Man.
My tax unit is fifty seven pounds. As long as it's probably less than that, because she's been here longer. So. You know, so I'm gonna be taxed an extra one point seven.
Oh, the only thing, fifty bucks, the only thing that gets.
Right.
They have every decision and where that extra is gonna come from. It's gonna come from my medicine, my food. My eating and.
Well, look, I mean, you know, flip something.
I'm close to it.
Well, I, I mean, I'm, I'm there with it and I hate, I mean, you know, it's gonna go up sixty eight dollars and that's. Take on your right. Some people have. But I also didn't discuss what I'm, and they went to the, went to school. Which is a lot, all people have concert. It was helping a lot of people that are slower any time that have to pay a school fee. So, and that was.
Yeah.
That's a better option than that.
Two need to do better to explain what they're trying to.
One, two, three, record.
Do you want us to record all the things?
We still got six more discussion prints.
I'm gonna take one. Contrary to what I know. That's like, you're not today. I only have like seven meters of net, so I'm gonna be.
Well, I told you what mine's about already.
Thank you for the break. Okay. We're back session now and. Before we move on with the rest of it, a lot of these things are things that are being brought to us. For the first time, please keep in mind, decisions do not have to be made today. Things can be put on further agendas. Okay, so let's have initial discussions on some of these items that. And that we may have to have more discussion on. You guys can go back and talk amongst yourselves or you can have different conversations and have more discussions on. So let's not. Trying to come up with solutions to everything. Let's have initial discussions and then move forward, okay? Yes. Okay. Joe, getting it back over here.
This whole evidence, I would like to go in and. Basically just update, bring it into today's compliance and take some of the administrative burden away. This would be a brief rundown of everything that I see in this evidence that creates that burden. So first off, it's a misnomer. It's called Sunday alcohol sales, but it's a full alcohol evidence. So I have had questions where our alcohol ordinance is and the people see this and say Sunday alcohol. That's the first piece. As you go through different requirements for different types of alcohol licensing, pouring warehouse. Gas stations, all that sort of thing. The more we can streamline that process for each one, I know there may be some standards that have to be different. For instance, employing a license to a restaurant or as much as you work is exclusively alcohol. But as much as we can. Where are closely trained exactly what they're looking for after they see it a couple of times? And then just the differences in that nuance. Um. A lot of the. Also takes a big burden on us and city and where the. For, it's a total page for financial report to get a license for a restaurant. That involves them having to get a CPA or a finance director, or if they understand finance themselves, they have to draft a whole. Other finances to explain to us in four or five different ways, so we can prove them to get a point license. Uh, that can be a lot more simple, uh, with what their revenue is. Bring in for. Bring it back. For the state. Uh, further, we have a requirement that we have to advertise three weeks in a row before we make any decision on a point license. Uh, to me, that's a big burden on us and the person looking for a license. So there's just a lot of administrative burden to get this process accomplished. And ninety percent of it aren't what the state requires. I understand we have our own. Things in place to make sure we're doing due diligence. Uh, but a lot of this in my opinion is what we can. And there will be a draft of what we're thinking comparable to other cities in our interview and how they're doing things.
Didn't you say there was something on there about having to ask Duncan something?
No.
Thought you said there was something.
No, I was saying I, I believe it's from that era when it came.
Okay.
Back specifically, as far as when this all came about, it's been over ten, fifteen years.
Yes.
So a lot has changed with the views on alcohol, with the views on having establishment that serves it. Because used to a connection with it was that you were gonna bring in a lot of different kind of businesses when you have broke these kind of things. So that's not what we see today. Um, so that's kind of where I was.
The, the advertising departments that you mentioned were common in this area. And a lot of cities have gotten rid of them.
It's antiquated. I'm sorting you an email that I sent in November of twenty twenty four. You and Tony, it may help. I hope it does. Not looking to take it over. I basically backfaced it, which. Uh, Mayor Robert Poe has sent to me, I'm seeing between.
I'd like to have the, copy that. There's this very, it's very in line with what the surrounding area is doing and it's still existing.
Yes.
For this sort of thing, I like, yeah, I need, Joe does the research, writes it up pretty much like you see it for us. And then we review and pick it apart if we really need to. For, for me, that works really well for it to work that way, because I can review something that I can see and read better. Than trying to talk about the side, do we need this in there? Do we need that in there? So, and I mean, we hired you for a reason. It can be that part of the reason. So, you know. My theory is you put together what you think we should have and then let us ask questions about it.
Could we have this on the next board session? Yes.
I see. Oh, see, all right. You have before you. Three different financial reports. They all very similar. And I'm gonna try to do this way out of my notes, you know, there's.
I got yellow, blue and orange.
Right. How to put them in order, green, blue and orange. But green, I'm not going on.
Yep.
So. The one that. These are kind of like the way we can represent it with percentages and different things. It's like not a way to show what I look at and why I prefer one and then. Um, I know London prefers the totals, for example. Okay, so the first report is, I gave them titles, budget versus actuals. That's two day report. What that means is the day that I stand up. It's when you take the number from the first part of the fiscal year through whatever that date was.
Right.
And occasionally. Uh, not say man, you know. Just. One, one month we would get one, it would be pull through day, and another month we would get one that's pull through the end of the previous month. I don't like the one that pulls through to date. Because even I look. Next month. May only have, like right now, the report that you have here, that's gonna encompass seven weeks versus the four weeks of July. Because our fiscal year's third. So I feel like that's a little bit fictitious if we're to say these are July financials. So that's the main reason I don't like that. I'm just gonna kind of throw that out there. That's the only thing I'm going to say about that one in particular. The next one up, which is very similar, and it's got the budget totals for the year. That's the blue one. Um, and if you'll notice on the percentages, and the reason I highlight them is because this is kind of how I look at it. You compare that into the next one. The one, that's really the only two difference in these reports is that the budget total. For the year is on the blue one. The budget that you see over the orange one. Is. Uh, related to this report. For instance, it would be through July in this case. If we're doing next month, then it was gonna encompass two months. So it's showing a percentage. It avoids me having to do the math. Because if I'm looking at this one and I look at the percentages, giving the example, first two highlighted item. It shows that we use eight percent of the budget, seven percent of the budget. What does that mean to me on a monthly basis if I'm looking at a monthly report? If you look at the one in orange, it shows you, it's at a hundred percent, ninety three percent. I automatically know we're on track. With that item. Looking at this report, I have to do the math. And if you're like four months in, you have to say, okay, divide. The seventeen fifty by twelve months times the four months. To get your number. To know if you're on track. So I find looking for trends is easier with the one that shows me where I should be. For those two months. Does that, that makes sense? Everybody wants to say.
The orange one, where you should be, and the other one is just on the whole of it.
All here, right. So just to give an example, then, you know, I just highlighted a couple to show. For instance, you come on down and you see that we're at twelve hundred percent. In the where we should be, that means we're over budget right now. Now, that's income. That's not necessarily bad. But it makes me look at that one and say, why are we over budget? Um, i- if you go up to one I don't have highlighted, general property taxes, you're way under budget. Because all of these, if you're right on track, if they're consistent monthly, you should be close to the hundred percent. On your percentage of that. Anything that's near a hundred percent, you're saying we're good, kind of not even looking at. You're at three and a half percent, you say, why is that? Well, the property taxes not gonna come until November. So you know that that particular item, I don't have to worry about if you look at it right now. So then the only ones you have to look at are the ones that are off, you know, uh, for instance, the library only is once a year. And if you look at expenses, you kind of come down, you know, eighty eight percent for salaries. That means we're. On the second page. Whereas if you're looking at the sheet, they have the totals, it's a little more misleading as to where you. You can do the math, but this helps you when you're doing that math to know if you're on track. For the month. Yeah, not everything, especially in expenses, not everything's cut to stone. Uh, office administration, that's one I would question, you know, I would. If. If I thought something were up in any way, meaning are we going over, why are we over budget on that? Well, maybe she ordered supplies for three months instead of one month. So, um, it would be a very reasonable that we're over, but I would might ask. So that was just examples. Uh, and I just kind of highlight, random highlighted some. That would make sense. And if y'all have any questions, Alex, feel free to ask me, but I thought I'd do it that way and send it home.
And are you wondering?
It's only through the end of each month, because you said it fiscal year to last month is when it's called. And so presently, land pools in September, it's gonna pull through the end of August. And if she doesn't happen to pull her until the tenth of the month, I don't know when or when. You know, okay, so if she doesn't happen to pull her, I think for the tenth. It's still gonna only go through the end of the previous month. That first report, if she were to pull it, it's gonna include parts of September. So that's why I say that's not, you know, that's a great one if you want to know where you are today for everything. And that's more like administrative in the office looking.
So if I'm understanding what you're trying to accomplish here is that. We'd rather see this on a monthly basis, the only the last month percentage of this. Versus the to date to port.
That, that's my friend.
On a monthly basis, because, and I understand why. This, this to me is more and better because of this, the reasons you've already stated.
Now, I want you to learn how to look at.
Yeah, so the second one, the blue one that says, uh, year to last month budget totals. This would be better for us to base our next year budget on, correct? Um.
Yeah, yes or no, I mean, you can do both, because by the time you get to ten months here. Like, which is about where we are when we're looking at building the next budget, your numbers are already showing it. It's pretty easy math and add two months. And that's what I'm saying, if you're trying to figure out where do we need to be or where, you know, are we, are we on track? Like utility is a good example. Is our, are our utilities running kind of the same amount each month? So like next month, we can look and say, well, we doubled utilities, you know, we had this month of last month. That number is doubled, so we're kind of on track for what we're doing. And if that's consistently. Over budget, for example, then we're looking before we get to the end of the year saying, wait a minute, we're gonna have to start moving some money. From somewhere that we had, because we can't go over our total budget.
That's true.
Because have to figure out where we're getting it, we're headed and we're going to. I find that one that he used to work with, but.
I see why.
If I had any questions, many, you know.
I've been doing long form ads for a few long.
But, yeah, but I think we do need to get consistent with which report we use. And that's kind of what's happening. It's part of it. Quick looks changing some of the reports. And you go in to get a report that you're accustomed to, the next thing you know, that one's not printing the way it used to.
See, I don't understand that. How does quick looks change it?
Okay. They decide that this is a better report for you, or this is a better way to present these numbers. And that's because it's software, you know. It's kind of a.
Suddenly you decide this is how you want it. But don't you tell it how you want it to be?
Well, yes or no.
They make it simple.
Yeah, you start with a standard type report. Um, and by doing a standard report, any standard report we can use, that cuts down on our administrative costs. Because if we're having to create a new report every time we go or, or she's having to go in and put a lot of parameters on it. That's gonna increase her time presenting it. If we can pull a report that's already a standard report. Um, that just cuts down on everything, plus it makes it more consistent. And then occasionally their standard report, quick looks decides they want that report to look different, so you have to look and say, does it still apply to us? It may be the same report that just looks different. It may have the exact same number, but it may look different. I tried to pull one with something I was doing for someone else. And suddenly I'm getting six columns instead of three, and I can't figure out how not to get those six columns. Yeah, and it's basically the same report that's in orange. And I did print one to show you it's the exact same number and you just kind of. But if I were to take that and look at it to see what has happened to the report that three or four days ago I asked for. It now prints out. You have to get this way because it's showing three columns, because what it's doing is it's showing July. But then it's showing the total for the year, your today total. All right. I don't know if, we'll know in September when we pull this one. I don't know if August is gonna show up. We're gonna then have nine columns. So we, this made me mute at this point.
Does everybody understand the orange one?
Yes.
It's explained.
Yes.
Okay.
So the orange one is what we're gonna be getting.
Yes.
Yes.
We're on that.
This is our standard report.
We have standard report. Like I said, when I tried to pull again, just to see.
How many of us have access to QuickBooks? Right now, there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, Joe. Good?
Can you come back soon?
Yeah. Or Lynn, I'm on them.
Oh, I'm sorry, our CPA also has access, he's our auditor.
Does Sam have that with his?
Sam is, Sam is still working with us, but he's not in the same capacity, but yes, he's helping us through our audit. Yeah, we went with another company that's thousand dollars less a month. And, uh, Sam still has a great relationship with the city, and we will call him Sam immediately, and he's good with that.
Okay, go on to the next.
Me? So, um, I don't know about y'all, but I get, uh, creeped out driving into towns where businesses are vacant, boarded up. It looks like it's not safe, right? That's just kind of my general feeling on it and, you know, feeling they're one thing, but, uh, doing something about it to help our city is another. I think that this ordinance here, uh, you should have a copy of it, it looks like this. Ordinance to require businesses operating in a brick and mortar location to maintain regular business operations will help us to not only avoid looking like a ghost town and increasing in housing issues, uh, code enforcement and otherwise, uh, safety issues, but it will also improve our viability in our commercial businesses, um, provide more jobs, more economic prosperity, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So this is basically to, uh, improve upon our current, uh, business licensure to require that brick and mortar locations maintain regular business operations. So that way we don't see vacant buildings or vacant storefronts.
How can we avoid having vacant buildings? Well, nobody has a business license in that building. And you can't require, you know, that space to be open. But if you have a business license, if you say you're running a business,
Okay.
be open.
Okay, I got you.
Or, for example, fourteen, fourteen burger and, uh, some other businesses that were.
We have several in the city right now.
Yeah, we have, we have a lot of businesses, and for the most part, they are open for regular business hours.
Okay, so, so like, four burger has a business license?
Yeah, and they're, okay, he's changed, he, remember?
But he's not.
No, he came to, he came to council and changed his, he has a different application, you know, something else.
He's a lot in.
Yeah.
Somewhere.
Like Dollar General, they're, they have hours posted, they're open during regular business hours, right? Let's say, for instance, the manager doesn't come in tomorrow and they shut down for a week because they can't find him or something. We need to know about that. We should, as a city, we should be informed. Um, not just because of being nosy, but to make sure that we're looking out for our city. You know, we, maybe the stock boy showed up and doesn't know how to open the store and doesn't know how to get into a corporate, who knows?
Let, let me use the example, and, and I'm not opposed to it necessarily, but I, I do want to use one example. We had an insurance company here in town once in the strip mall. They did not keep regular hours, because it was a one man show. They were both telling their door when they would be back, and they would just be out with like appointment type thing.
Okay, that's still regular business hours, they have hours, uh, appointment, I would, I think.
Okay.
That's my opinion. We're not setting the business hours for businesses, we're just making this an addition. So that they can't only get a business license for I don't know, for an insurance company and not do business at the location.
Okay.
It makes it look vacant, unused, it, you know, leaves the city and the business to some, to crime and, you know, just the other things, so.
Yeah, if our attorney says that interest is set, then I'm. I would like this, if we're not still having a conversation about this, I would like that to go on the next work session. I would like to do a lot of, some research on that and, um, talk about it again.
I like the idea.
I do, too.
I just have to make sure that our businesses feel supported, I mean, when one business is next to one another, another business is closed, it's rough, the other business is going to be like, uh, yeah, they're, yeah. And the customers are not going to be drawn. Like, the donut shop closed because they were having a change of management. That was something we knew about. I'm sure the people in the strip mall knew about it. That's great, now they're reopened, now there, you see the traffic has increased over there because they're reopening, so.
And then, yeah, we could maybe be help more with the public, because people didn't know why it closed. And if we could have said, you know, it's a reason, humorately closed. Yeah, no.
Yeah. Anywhere you go, step where you're like, is this like, is this like that?
Could be, they don't have a warning written.
Yeah, has Jay, have you seen this one? Okay, we bet this by Jay, too.
Our ordinances are written that a business license.
Yeah.
Usually there's probably like a hearing process on that.
I'm just asking, you're writing down enforcement of that.
Yeah, that's all sections, so it's, okay.
Anybody else have any comments on this? Thanks. Thanks, Ray. All right, and then we're on with the next meeting.
That's me, it is.
Nonprofit.
That's me again.
All right, so, um, I originally drafted a this ordinance with the intent of causing a rental licensure to be, uh, required in the city. And I sent it to Joe first, and he caught it immediately, he said, hey, this is not House Bill three ninety-nine compliant, House Bill three ninety-nine passed and when is your effect in July? Um, and it's actually the very first paragraph says you cannot, uh, cause a registry, uh, for rental properties in the city. So I amended, uh, this ordinance, uh, and the purpose of it is to protect the health and safety and welfare of the residents of the city of Water Grove and to ensure that rental housing, when provided, is maintained in a safe and sanitary condition. So I, I was able to edit this to be compliant with the House Bill three ninety-nine. Not sure, um, when we would be able, what, what, uh, circumstances would come about that would cause us to have to do something? Because there is some protections for tenants, protections for, um, landlords, inspections and penalties, enforcement penalties in here, but I'm not sure exactly without a registry how we would get to enforce it. So.
It would come down to, I mean, your due process, kind of enforcement files, we've had situations similar. To me, when I read this, it's echoing the state law.
Yeah.
Uh, with the amendment that you mentioned. And, uh, really it's just putting on notice to the community that people in the state are.
And it's really, I've received several phone calls from friends who have had issues with, um, renting. Um, and we're not able to get any satisfaction, that, that's where motivation came from. To look into this was to help some other people.
So is this more or less redundant of the state law?
I wouldn't necessarily say redundant. Um, we, we do this a fair amount in general, it's just like asking a resolution to acknowledge something. Uh, but here we confided ourselves in our own city ordinances, uh, for instance, the Sunday alcohol sales that we're talking about, ninety percent of that is redundant. Um, but this makes it a lot easier for us to go look at our own ordinance. Say, for instance, I'm out for a month and, uh, Lynn has to be the city manager, city manager. She gave a normal notice that I can look at the state law, and then it happened.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm ensuring, you know, safe housing, maintain safe and sanitary condition. So I'm assuming then we refer to state laws to how we determine those conditions if we think there's a violation of something. Okay. That's all I'm questioning.
If there is, say, for instance, there is a home that is in terrible condition, uh, the tenant reports it to the city, who does the city report it to? Our company. So then the landlord would be required to appear in court, is that right?
If they didn't care, but, yes. I'm curious about that, though. The landlord said, uh, we're not getting you a new fridge. And the tenant reported that to the city. How can we see that?
And can you see it?
Yeah, it's in our inspection, these flaws on this, um, ordinance. You can, uh, it says, a written or verbal complaint will be filed by a tenant or member of the public. The conditions observable from public view, if entry into the dwelling is refused, the city must obtain an administrative inspection warrant prior to entry. That's why I had that highlighted.
How do we get that administrative inspection warrant? That one thing we create, you know, you got to go through, uh.
It's not very, I don't think, it didn't allow.
Either, either judge would have to issue them.
Yeah, our usual, yeah, sorry.
As the tenant, essentially, they're not, they're not even the.
The property manager, not.
Well, no, the, the tenant, and here's.
And if the tenant can give, can give you permission into the, it's there.
Right, right, so that's my experience has been that's where most of your complaint will come from the tenants the most. And then if the tenant's providing access, you kind of bypass the need for that.
I'll tell you where you'll see an issue with this is this happens and then the landlord is in trouble, um, in trouble for it and is fine. And then, um, affordable housing is no longer affordable, the landlord increases the rent because they have to endure additional costs. Um, and I feel like that is the struggle with rental.
That's a serious one.
Laws.
Who needs that?
Um, the grid laws.
But the lease is up in six months, there's, that's not going to be any retaliation.
But that's another thing, and if there's a lease between the renter and the landlord, and they both agree on such and such situations.
Some things you can't legally agree on, and, and landlords will do that. And if they're both being landlords, they will say, you know, this refrigerator is here, but you don't get a new one if it breaks. And that's not necessarily something you can do legally, I mean, I'm not looking at Georgia laws, I don't know, but.
The, the better way to see this is through a, um, real example with what they've outlined in certain laws, for instance, uh, it comes down to minimal, uh, conventional housing, things like that, so, uh, moving here, you know, inside, it's a much easier thing to see that you can force. Uh, so sometimes if you put it in the right time, what do we example, it's a little bit easier to see. Because then they couldn't just retaliate easily by embracing, you know. It brings to the season, she goes, if a lease is just extending on and on, we know to those issues. Where if, uh, there's no drywall inside, it's just front panel. It rents quality.
And then that turns into maybe a building, building code violation or something like that, that nature.
And I was thinking about what Erica said about avoidable housing.
It's going to be ultimately up to the tenant.
I'm not saying that tenant should be kept. But if issues come up and the city gets involved and the land, and the landlord just decides, well, I just won't rent it anymore. And then you got a homeless family. Because I don't know, I, I doubt that we can require you to keep renting.
No.
Yeah.
But that's why I'm saying it's ultimately up to the tenant, whether if they want to report that or not. And when they report that, they are smart enough to know if the landlord is going to incur additional costs. When my lease comes up for renewal, it's probably going to be increased. Or if I'm complaining too much, my landlord may decide I cheated on rent to be important. So it's going to lay in the hands of the tenant, am I right?
You'll find a lot of, uh, probably been a new consequences with this bill that are very, and no one will have been able to play out until we see it play out.
Yeah.
That's true.
Um, I haven't read Georgia landlord tenant law, or, or laws, but most state laws protect the tenant more so than the landlord in one sense. Um, and, and a lot of tenants use that to their advantage to try to avoid paying rent because they don't have the rent money and things like that. So you find a lot of that, and that can come to the city, but it ultimately is the state law that's going to cover what they can and can't do.
Yep.
Um.
And those states, Georgia is very.
They are extremely, it's all about what you got in that contract.
Even this bill is pretty.
There is a secret.
Rental properties.
Yeah.
And I support you one hundred percent, which is, um, I just don't know how to, how do you fix it? I'm going to have to fix it.
I want, what, go ahead. No, you're going to explain to them.
What I wanted, what I wanted to accomplish here was to support our efforts to make our city more fantastic, probably be by representing all people to live here, brothers, landlords, et cetera. I, my thought process was that a registry would help our code enforcement to help landlords who may not be here understand, hey, this is what's going on at your property that you don't, never see, because you don't live here. And because it takes hours to find the speech, so that we can tell, because I mean, we could find, you know, you know, Smith who lives in this one house over here all day long, but he may not hear anything back, that one to see. Black notch, and he fell off the house and found that the dark blue bridge, you know, things like that, that a landlord may not be sure of. That was one that, the other side of it, too, was state health, the state has some, um, it would be enforceable, and that's why we have to go for it. So he's driving around, but tenants don't feel like they can turn to us and say, hey, city of Water Grove, can't you do something about this? Floor that caved in in my trailer because my landlord lost my place, and I'm going to tie my, I have to be sure of the hangout. So really, it was, it was that was my thought.
Right.
Obviously, I can't control tenants anymore. So there goes.
And it's, and really truly, it goes both ways, the landlord can contact us and complain about the tenant.
I agree with you, the whole situation can be very heartbreaking, to be honest with you.
Yes.
Um, but.
Yeah. I don't, I would increase our housing costs by any means. But I certainly don't want to be a place for tenants rentals either. Well, under, under section number four, too, where you have the owner man, your legal man, and the current family address, that's where we've done a lot of success in the city right now. So it's good that that's been there.
Yeah.
Because we've contacted, you not guess the executor.
And we have a, um, not a mandatory registry, but an optional registry, is that possible? So like when they go to closing, um, they have an option if they're buying a property in the city of Water Grove to register landlords?
It's definitely going to be a question for Jay. The letter of the law says you not need to pay. But intent is always the.
Is this ready to go to the next, uh, council meeting, or do we need to go ahead and have the lead look at and make sure we're?
I, I don't know, the council meeting, I don't have, you know.
Well, there's some things in here that doesn't stay like, um, it's not clear, clear on enforcement.
Right.
Uh, who would be doing inspections, it needs to say code enforcement, you know, there's a few things in here that we need to go ahead and, and kind of nail down a little bit, so.
Right.
Put this on the next work session then, and have Joe, Joe and Jay take a look at it, what do you think?
So I think if you're going the way, we have a work session, we've done, we're making, we're considering, depending on how long it takes to actually, or to lead a seminar. So I think if you're going the way, we have a work session with you there, where we can, we can, depending on how long it takes to actually, or to lead a seminar. Um, but one thing I think is the biggest piece to chew on here, and once all the legislation we've announced, everyone, state is going to already. The thing that I think council has to weigh in here is, do we want the state enforcing it? Or can we give it a small, small cost? And deliver ourselves in this manner. And there's some things that will go to state regardless, but I, I do feel it is a lot easier to talk to their owner myself. Uh, trying to help them see reason that it's possible, or you talk to his head, saying, you probably don't have to do a lot of that, because my words are broken. Um, so keeping it at that level, so that's how I look, I think it's a sign.
I was going to say, since we're becoming the enforcer for this state law, it's essentially all. And then, of course, if he feels the need to turn it, if a code enforcement feels the need to turn it to someone else, another. Like the fourth winner.
Since I I had the pleasure of attending a, um, survey class last week and had some things, just some ideas, my thoughts go off during the class, mainly about stormwater. And I looked into it a little deeper, um, because as everyone knows, we just, um, covered a large stormwater bill in Magnolia Springs that we, that are used throughout the city. Um, and some of those issues, the city will be responsible for and some of them we will not. Um, the cost, the cost associated with stormwater is astronomical compared to our budget. Um, so I had the idea of reaching out to Loganville. Um, and Mr. Fanny was kind enough to send me their rates for they, for their stormwater fund. And they charge per month because they bill their, um, fines, it's not. Uh, monthly for sewer and water. And so they bill per month. What Gwinnett County does is they put it on their tax bill. Um, the monthly rate for Loganville is five dollars and sixty cents. So if you're talking about top twelve, sixty bucks a year for each, um, resident added to the property taxes, um, to go towards a stormwater fund. We don't currently have a stormwater fund. And as the pipes in the county are all nearing or exceeding thirty years old, I think that would be a smart decision to start. Um, commercial is built differently. They are built on an impermeable surface, which makes total sense. Um, and in Loganville, it's per three thousand square feet. They are billed at five dollars and sixty cents, which is an average size of the house. Um, well, the big house. Um, so I'm just asking you all to consider starting a stormwater fund and, um, a reasonable amount to add to the taxes, but that's we, the trash bill will not be a good way for us to bill, um, them for the stormwater. We will need to add it to the tax bill. And I think this year may be a good year to do it. They're going to see Warner Grove's rollback. Um, so we've, that was nice. And so, yeah. It won't be as bad on their tax bill this year.
I sort of disagree that. I think this is the wrong time to put this in place. You've got Walton, you, the Walton County tax going up right now that everybody's screaming about. We're putting sanitation back on the residents. I mean, I think we need to at least not look at it until next year budget time. That's my first opinion.
Yeah, aren't you looking into this yourself?
Um, so we did a, uh, a survey through the city of kind of our rough spots, couple weeks ago, me there, while they were engineer. Um, we do have a lot of projects that are going to come up very soon, some of them sooner than others, so. Uh, that report should be getting to me very soon from here. And so we had a couple citizens reach out, as you may know, uh, what problems. So there are a lot of projects that are going to come up very soon, this stormwater. Uh, and not just repair projects, but also we'll have to get with them to take out sediment. Um, where, you know, it's just over time, some of those have filled up, or where a culvert has paved in where someone drove over. So lots of stuff coming up very quickly. Um, we are looking at a way to create a fairness of it. Uh, how we would implement it if we decided to do so, or if the county decides to do so. Um, that would include kind of a legal database, a lot size, um, permeation. You can do that with residential properties as well. Um, but just finding which one would be our administrative burden and be fair to the citizens as well. Um, as far as timing, I'm too much, I haven't went down that road yet. But I can have a recommendation. This is something we are.
So this report that you're going to give us will give us a total cost of all the projects that need to happen?
Yes.
And then break down per project, an estimate, obviously. All right, so.
Even on, they can't see in the ground.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
So, yeah, right now, without this being, we pay for stormwater, uh, systems to be maintained through splosh funds, correct? Some splosh. Some splosh.
And I'm not saying I'm opposed to doing this in general, okay? I, I just think it's not something we need to do super quickly. And even having too much discussion with it, I just think when things settle.
I absolutely disagree. I think that we needed this to happen last year. Um, because we are reading what the damages were and how old our system was and the lack of maintenance from previous administrations going back years. Um, okay. And how soon are we going to have that report? Did you say next week?
I take control of the sideline. Uh, there is a one person issue that is causing it. I, I have to opt him to be able to get it back after.
Another thing I've kind of just thought about throughout this is, um, maybe thinking about how, um, buildings are built in the future. You know, um, ditches are not as beautiful, but they don't have to be replaced every thirty years. It's a lot easier to dig out a ditch versus, uh, replace a two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollar pipe and part of a road. Um, right. And I'm not saying that in likes, I'm not trying to say if we approve a subdivision next year that we should have, we shouldn't have curb and gutter, um, but maybe, uh, talk about um, require an amount of land to build so that so much infrastructure isn't in the ground. But that's a later discussion, but.
Natural.
Yeah. Natural flow of water.
Unfortunately, those developers, they like to use, use the land that they have and they like to go underneath with their estate.
And it's weird that I'm a real estate agent, because I'm like.
We're not business.
I know.
Why don't we wait to get that report back from Joe, see what's out there. We know right now there's a big one, the big issue, and then we'll go if we're having that looked at, and that has to be repaired. Um, and some of the other things that are going to be popping up, some will be more important and, and, yeah, than others. So let's wait for that report. This is already being looked at. Uh, this is, is this an exercise, fact, text? Is that what that is? Impacting.
Impacting.
Yeah.
And then there, there's another consideration. It is an enterprise bond. So when we, if we do decide it, there's some financial.
Well, I trust you to take care of that, Alan, or that it's being taken care of. So thank you very much.
Speed detection signs.
Stephanie.
Yep.
Uh, we talked about this on the floor. Um, and Stephanie, you can probably jog my memory, you'll remember things a lot better than I. Um, actually, I thought that we were purchasing one because it was under the five thousand dollar limit. Um, but we haven't yet. Is that correct? Is that we just haven't purchased it yet?
Um, I don't think that there was ever a, I think this was, came up at the beginning of twenty twenty-four.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, I don't think we one that was no boat, yes, it's under five thousand dollars, but this is the type of thing that, uh, yeah, because that's, it's not an emergency.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. And what's to go? What's to go?
So, um, the reason I've been looking into this, if anyone is not aware, I recently moved from inside Emerald Cove to on eighty-one. Um, I can feel my house move from the trucks. Um, and you can't stop the trucks. You're on a state highway. Um, but the speed is crazy. To come out of my driveway, I have to, especially during the summertime when the trees are blooming. I have to stop about twenty feet from the end of my driveway, looking a little gap in the trees. Look over the hill this way, and when I can see that no cars are coming like right at City Hall, I have to shoot out into the road. Um, because people are coming, and it's not even the aspect of them coming from Guthrie to Warner Grove that, I mean, they are going fast, but the people leaving the city limits from City Hall going out into the county. I mean, you literally just passed the red light. Why are you going sixty miles an hour?
How does that fix this?
This is how I'm going to let them know, hey, you're speeding. Um, and so this is my whole thought process.
And it's going to be, I'm going to say, put the one out here, maybe lose my train of thought.
I'm so sorry. So my thought process is, um, there was a sign at the high school. It was, um, there by the sheriff's department. It caught your attention. Not only was it saying, hey, you're speeding from eight hundred feet away, flashing at you with red, and, but it also had red and blue lights on. And I'm like, oh, me, it was me. I was like, I need to slow down. And then the next time I got to that spot again, I did it again. I was like, gosh, I really need to slow down. And so I have now when I'm on Guthrie, I'm like, okay, the speed limit is thirty-five right here. I need to slow my tail down. Um, so it catches your attention, whereas before it, it just didn't. Um, and with it being a state highway, I don't know exactly how this works. But these signs collect data, and if we can present that data to DOT, can we ask them to change the speed limit signs? Um, I know that we would need to, and in order to do it ourselves, we have to annex in more properties, so our ones are further. Um, but if we have this data, could we do it before that? Or if that annexation ever happens, um, could we do it before if we can present DOT with the data? Um, also, prices of these signs. Um, I have one here for a battery operated sign. Uh, from conversations with the sign company. This needs quite a bit of maintenance, exactly. So because of the how much traffic we have on eighty-one and thirty-eight, um, and how many cars are going to be speeding, it's going to be working in overtime. So the battery will die very quickly. So my suggestion is if we get one of these, we should definitely go with a solar powered sign. Um, and the solar powered sign has a battery backup. So if it is a drury day or a drury week, it still had that battery backup. Uh, all of these signs are meaningful. I did reach out to another company, um, that the sheriff's office purchased their signs from. And it was called Stalker Radar, I think. Um, the sign that the sheriff had by the high school is over twelve thousand dollars. Um, the the not so fancy one that is similar to it is ten thousand dollars. So that company is going to get me quotes similar to what the quotes in front of you are. Um, and what these are is you put the speed detection thing on a pole. If you have multiple poles, and then you can move it from one pole to the other pole, uh, which is much more affordable. Um, but at that point, it's not considered a mobile sign. So you have to have permission, will have to get further involved with DOT. If it was a true mobile sign, like what the sheriffs have. Uh, because it's mobile, you don't have to have DOT permission, but that cost is various.
Well, you've got a quote here for a little patrol stand.
And that for radar sign, you're right, you're right.
Yeah, so we could do that in conjunction with the sign and keep it mobile.
We're interested in your practice. So, um, the one that the thirteen inch with the speeds variable from six hundred feet, that is solar powered power. And then on addition to that, you need to add the mobile unit.
When I answer your question, are you only proposing we buy one of these?
Because our city limits is very small, uh, so uh, another option is to have cloud-based data.
Yeah.
Um, whereas Joe could literally check it from his desk, and I was talking to the lady, the sales lady. And I was like, well, that makes sense for the county probably because they have signs all over the county, but when you literally just walk to the sign, you can get that in yourself. Um, maybe we can, that expense is the worst. Um, and that's why I said just one, because we can have it on one thirty-eight, they've once, and, well, and then we can also move it to like Old Holly, maybe one hundred, something like that. I'm finding, um, probably, we have to do further research, that leaving one of these signs in the same location for two weeks probably catches people's attention. And then you can move it to another location.
Now, I'm of the opinion that we should have two, one on either, well, over the floor. Every time you come into the city, whichever way you're coming in.
If we could rent them, I think that would be a great option.
But, yeah, I would say we can move it. We can move it. It's fine. You know, I, I really, uh, like the idea of getting a mobile sign and, and, you know, place it, one that's affordable, I mean, six grand, that's half the cost of the sheriff's sign.
Right, yeah.
And we would, unless you could take care of it, and it's solar powered, which means, you know, some of the.
And it provides us data that we plan to give to the state or to the sheriff's department, so we can tell them where our issues are.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah.
Yeah. There's a lot of problems.
And I thought, we have a great relationship with the sheriff's department. Um, anytime I call them, I get great service. Um, but they only have, I think, six signs for the whole county, so we can't request one to stay within our city limits in a, right? So I think it's, it'd be a good idea for us to have our own.
The one that's on Hart Street, it was there yesterday. Have we been by today? Is it still there?
Um, in by today, but I do know that they moved out one from Guthrie.
It belongs to the area department.
It is.
One is there.
Because they, we have, they service one group.
But we got street funds.
Well, people still speed.
We're not the biggest people. Yeah, people still flying down there.
Yes. And it's not giving out tickets or anything like that. It's just it's there to make people aware, hey, they're speeding. And they might think it might go missing, so.
I think we have a foundation of this, in my opinion.
Are you only looking at it for state reps? Are you going to use it on the county, the city reps?
Well, I think that it, I mean, that's going to be administrative, what Joe decides to do, really, but I believe it should be. Well, I think that it, I mean, that's going to be administrative, what Joe decides to do really, but I believe it should be, uh, predominantly on the state roads. And that's their big safety issues blown out of those. But, um, we can use it wherever we want. It's for the whole City of Water.
We talked about a lot of things that are required administrative support.
Well, I mean, it's just a decision of where everyone wants to put the sign and then I'm assuming that they'll probably have code enforcement or somebody going out there.
It'll be a schedule and it should be published where you put it out somewhere.
Yeah.
So what about the maintenance ended up key? We got anything else that I have scheduled? You have schedules with D U O. You know, those schedules is.
I think the citizens could release it about.
Yes, since I don't speak, I don't worry about those signs. I don't pay any attention to them. But I don't know. If, if we're trying to cut costs in the city, I don't. I'm not in my mind cost justifying it because I don't see it. I don't know if it's going to be effective. If there's data from other cities that show us that it was effective for them, that might help me. Okay, I'm, you know, I, I'm not saying that might not be, I'm just saying right now. I said, I actually saw this sign out here and so I looked and I watched the traffic. I saw two cars speeding up, see how fast they could get to the end of the song. I'm like, whoa, that was surprising. You know, I don't know. Ever come into it without doing more research.
You know, I would almost say to put it off to the network's end and the reason is that, one, we need to find out the permitting. If we can have a document stapled, you're not a part of this.
Remote.
Yeah, remote. And two, wouldn't it be better to have a program working with the sheriff's department? In their agreement that, or DOT that, let's do this recording over a period of spending months using new signs. And if we see that it's, you know, continuing to happen, that we've got something to mitigate what's happening rather than just reminding people to slow down. Because I think I, I get everything. Um, but I think we have to have an end game. There has to be a reason. Other than just reminding people to slow down. And I think if we have something like the call to DOT or have a meeting with DOT or the sheriff's department, that if we bring this information to them, will there be something that's in the mode of?
Okay. Do we have a, I almost called you yesterday. Um, we have a certain contact at DOT that we can just talk to about issues?
I've got the actual name of the guy who does the road first. This lead.
Great.
I'll refer to you too. If you want to go more that we, when we do the signs and they attach to DOT signs, you don't have to have a permit. You don't have permission.
Oh, okay.
So then we, they have the, we need a device to mount it on.
Right.
So if we get conversion, we think we want to figure that out. If that seems true.
Yeah, I, if they're effective, I, I can see it. Um, I guess in my mind, I'm thinking, you know, out of 81, the people that are really the abuser, are they going to pay any attention to, you know? You're certainly not considered an abuser, I would think. So you paid attention to it. But just because she drives a little crazy sometimes. But no, I'm sure she tries to abide by the law for the most.
That's right, she does.
Um, but, yeah, are, are the people that need to be pulled down going to be doing this by my.
I wonder, um, if we reach out here to the sheriff's department and they can provide us with some type of data that says, hey, the first day we put this on out, this is how fast we were going and this is how much they were speeding and then, you know, about the end of the week it had decreased.
Probably not.
Yeah, that would be not.
So how many did you say the county unit?
I think they, I think this for the whole.
Maybe they would put it out on 81 force for a few days and collect the data.
Yeah, if it shows that they're slowing down.
Then.
And then it makes sense to find.
Right, it makes. Makes it.
I'd like to more cost. Yeah, I'm not against it, but we've got to make sure that there's a.
Well, it felt like the cost justified.
Okay.
And we made it through.
Yeah. I think so.
For a session?
Yes.
Yes. All right, attorney general. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right. We are through and thanks, everybody. Thank you for bringing in ordinances and suggestions and ideas. This is great. I think maybe just not so many adjustments.